Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order if you would stay standing for a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Please be seated. Mr. Hutton, I can ask you to roll call, please.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Counselor Doncaster?
Present.
Counselor Donkey?
Here.
Counselor Ema?
Here.
Counselor Farrar?
Yes.
Counselor Gibson?
Yo.
Counselor Gruss?
Here.
Counselor King-Fair? Counselor Love?
Here.
Counselor McKay?
Here.
Counselor Miller?
Here.
Warden Murphy?
Here.
Counselor Beckett?
Present.
Counselor Reinwald?
Present.
Counselor Robinson?
Present.
Counselor Stack?
Here.
Counselor Sweet?
Here.
Counselor Visnisske Moore?
Here.
Thank you, Madam Warden.
Thank you, Mr. Hutton. At this time, I will ask if there's any disclosure of the community or your interests or the general nature thereof. Counselor Reinwald?
As far as the community or your interests goes, I was just wondering what is going on here today. There seems to be a wicked buzz going on. Everybody's up and lively. Do they have that second cup of coffee?
That's how I would... Just wanted to... Oh, Counselor Doncaster?
Thank you, Madam Warden. There will be a report from the striking committee coming forward, and I would be very interested to know if that will work.
Thank you, Counselor Doncaster. I was just going to say, if your agenda does not say this, there is, under Committee Reports, item number F, striking committee, and those reports will be on your desk. Thank you. I'd ask at this time for an adoption of the minutes from our April 26 County Council meeting, moved by Counselor Visnisske Moore, seconded by Counselor Gibson. Any errors or omissions? Seeing none, all in favor. Thank you. As we gather in chambers this morning, I would like to acknowledge on behalf of the council and our community that we are meeting today on traditional territory of the First Nations. We would like to thank the all government of people and express our respect and support for their rich history. We are extremely grateful for their many and continued displays of friendship. Members of County Council, during the month of May, I attended 10 meetings on county business. On May 1, I attended along with Counselor Peter Ema and members of the Eastern Military Wardens Caucus, a breakfast meeting with members of Parliament on Parliament Hill to discuss securing more infrastructure funding and improving mobile communication networks and capacity for mobile devices. On May 15, I attended the information session on flood response at Portent Township Community Centre. On May 24th and 25th, I attended along with Counselor Bob Sweet, CAO Jim Hutton, and Director of Public Works and Engineering Steve Boland, meetings in Ottawa with various officials from the Government of Canada to discuss the proposed expansion of County Road 51, Petawawa Boulevard. During the meetings, we expressed the need from the Government of Canada and Ontario to be funding partners along with the county and the town of Petawawa in order to ensure that the project could move ahead successfully. On May 27, I attended the 2017 Mirror Machine Lodge Foundation Gala. The theme was "Canada: A Walk Through Time." The event was well-attended and everybody enjoyed it. Thank you to Mirror Machine Lodge Foundation for a very successful and enjoyable fundraising event. On May 28, I attended the annual general meeting of the Ontario Snowmobile Federation District 6 at the Snow Divers Club in North Elgon Wilberforce. At this time, I would like to express our condolences on behalf of all of County Council to Bruce Beakley on the passing of his father, but on a nice note, happy birthday to Bruce. I will remind those assembled here of the following: the county of Renfrew, experience our history, share our future. This concludes my address for this session of County Council. Thank you. At this time, I will ask Mr. Hutton to introduce our first delegation.
Thank you very much, Warden, and members of County Council. At this point, we have a delegation from the Renfrew County Museum Network to provide an update on their activities. I would ask Danielle Paul, President of the Network, to go forward, introduce her team, and present the County Council. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hutton. With me here today, as Mr. Hutton told you, is a small team from the Renfrew County Museums Network. We have our Vice President and Membership Secretary, Alan Simmons. Beg your pardon. We have our Treasurer, Bob Clausen, from 42nd Regiment, and we have Lynn Postle, from one of our directors, who represents Hope Farmhouse Museum in Killaloo. Just make sure this works. Right. On your way into the council chambers today, you may have noticed our display in the foyer, and I would urge you to visit it after this morning's presentation. Also, we have reserved a bit of time for questions at the end, but if you have any questions as we go through, please don't hesitate to ask. Just speak up. The Renfrew County Museums Network was formed in 2002 to allow each museum to benefit through cooperation and the sharing of information, brochures, and resources with other county museums. The network's vision is to improve the promotion of the diverse cultural heritage facilities in the county. Now, this map is just to remind you of the natural boundaries of regions within the county, and before we go any further, I'll just throw this out if anyone wants to suggest how many museums there actually are in Renfrew County. If you've been speaking to any of my colleagues this morning, you may have a hint. All right, no takers. This map shows the location of our museum members and heritage partners, and don't worry, I will give you a list because it's very difficult to see the symbols for each museum and heritage partner, and I'm not going to try technology on a Zoom, okay? Not after the audio issue here. When the RCNN began in 2002, I think our membership was less than a dozen, and when the network last presented to you about five years ago, I think at that time it was 15 museums and four heritage partners. Last year, our total membership reached 30, comprised of 22 museums and eight heritage partners. Our membership spans the entire county, from north of Deep River down to Aran Prior; in the south, from Foresters Falls in the east, across to Madawaska Valley in the west. And by the way, that 22 museums does not represent every single museum in the county. There's still a few we hope to gather into our net. Our successful growth has been accompanied by some network achievements in the past five years, things like our website and our summer passport program. I will give you a little detail about these later, along with a few of the other ways that we engage and interact with the public. But I would like to acknowledge the support and collaboration that we have received during this period of growth from partners such as the Ottawa Valley Tourist Association, broadcasters, local media such as MyFM, and their collaboration and support has been very helpful. For example, the photos that you see of museum visitors in this morning's presentation were provided to us by the OVTA from a photo shoot at the Polish Kasia Heritage Museum in Willno. Now, keeping in mind the map, you won't be surprised to see that our network exec is comprised of folks from many of your municipalities, all the way across the county. My colleagues represent a remarkably wide range of interests as well as diverse cultures, and that again speaks to the reality of life here in Renfrew County. Please take up my invitation to chat with us later this morning. I'm confident you will be pleased to see how evident is our prize and pride and commitment to our heritage. In 2014, we also took the step of incorporating as a nonprofit affiliate of the Imperial Historical Society. This allows some of our smaller museums, who could not possibly afford incorporation, to attain a status of their own, as well as benefit from some of the membership programs provided by the OHS. Now, since that map was so hard to read, I'm going to give you a list of museum members that's also hard to read because there's so many of us. However, they are all listed in the handout that Rose has arranged for you, okay? And here also is a list of our heritage partners. You may ask, what is the difference between a heritage partner and a museum? Our museum members provide three-dimensional displays and exhibits that are open to the public for a minimum of 10 weeks per year. While this is not an option for our heritage partners, they are all equally committed to the Renfrew County heritage, and they support the network's mission, statement, and vision. Now, you'll recall that vision: to promote the diverse cultural heritage facilities in the county. One of the ways we do this is with our community outreach program. Here are some of the outreach events that the Renfrew County Museums Network undertook last year. I can assure you, we'll go anywhere, so if you want us in your municipality, see me after. But we are limited by the availability of volunteers. Plus, many events require a hefty booth fee. For this reason, we collaborate whenever possible. For example, just down the list, you will see the OVTA Trade Show. That allows us, every summer, to reach the new crop of summer students who will be staffing the county's visitor information centers. And here's a few photos from some of the outreach events we attended in the last year. Now, on the subject of community outreach, last year, we began to track the time and expenses that our volunteers from the network spent promoting heritage in the county. We don't track every email or every phone call, but this represents some of the events that we attended, and at the urging of our ministry heritage partner, we actually assigned a dollar value against this in-kind donation of time and travel. I would draw your attention to the note at the bottom of the slide, just as a reminder that this is for network activities only. It does not reflect any time spent on behalf of an individual museum. And now to some of the network's special projects. And no, there's no cooking involved, I'm sorry. Well, actually, some of the programs do involve food, so... In 2012, we launched our website. Now, for some of our member museums and heritage partners, this is the only online presence that they have, so it's vital for that reason for those members. We like to shop local, so we went to a local business, Design House, and they started us off. Last year, in part to help reduce ongoing maintenance costs, we revamped the website, and we are currently undertaking a training program for our members so they can update their own content and their own events. I would like to acknowledge support from another local business, Blue North Studios, who helped us with the migration of the website at a heavily discounted rate. I would also like to acknowledge support from OVTA and ECDEV county regarding our web hosting. Now, if you would like to keep abreast of what is happening in the Renfrew County Museums Network, just visit the website and sign up for updates. You'll get an email when something is posted, only once a week if there's an update. For example, you would get notice of some of the special exhibitions that are occurring in this Canada 150 year. Our website updates and our social media posts help to keep you informed of these and many more of the network members. Now, another project is our summer passport program. This program is designed to increase awareness and visitor numbers for network members as a whole. You will each have received an advance copy of this summer's passport. The program takes place during July and August. Our first passport was a tear-out sheet in Travel Our Backyard magazine in 2015, and that's when we tested the idea of a passport, and the response encouraged us to repeat the program. Since then, support from MyFM and OVTA has made a big, big difference to the program. Last year, one of our museum members graciously produced all our passport, and this year, we have a new printing partner onboard, Bayberry Design in Bury's Bay. I would encourage you to use your passports this summer to visit museums that are outside your local municipality. Other things that the network does is to provide support ongoing to our membership. These are a few of the items on our current list. Top of the list, succession planning. It's critical, and we urgently require assistance. I don't have to tell you that the county demographic leans towards retired age, third-age people, okay? And because we are a volunteer organization, this means we are constantly challenged by advancing age and poor health. This limits and, in fact, involves the loss at times of some of our most popular and unique museums. The network's community outreach program is one way in which we inspire new volunteers to participate in preserving and celebrating our heritage, and we are also in communication with groups such as the Renfrew County Youth Network to involve younger people. The fact is, you take young folks to a museum, the stories are phenomenal. They love stories and storytelling, so engaging youth is not the problem. It's just getting them to a stage where they can actually be involved to run the museum. Another example of a special project currently undertaken by our network is compiling a central database of sometimes rare, often out-of-print heritage books regarding the county. Given that this county does not have essential archives, this database will be a valuable resource for the general public, not just for historians or students or researchers, and certainly not just for the museums network. Now, a quick look at some of our marketing and promotion initiatives. This particular slide shows the network's display ad in this year's Ottawa Valley Tourist Association roadmap, and here again, I would like to acknowledge the support of the OVTA for the annual roadmap. They are generously helping us this year by matching extravoluntary cash donations made by some of our museum members so that we can have a bigger space in the map in this Canada 150 year. Here also is a brief list of our main vehicles for marketing and promotions. Because our membership has grown so much since our real-life brochure was produced, it's badly in need of an update, and I'm pleased to say that this year, 100% of our museum members are listed in the OVTA roadmap, under museums and attractions. And now, for some figures. This is a summary of our financial statement presented to members at last month's AGM. If you look at the bottom, you see we have $580 in the bank, so you know that we do operate on the proverbial shoestring. We regularly hear from museum members whose sources of funding have been cut. One of our longstanding museums was recently notified of a cut of more than two-thirds of its annual grant. Not only has the museum's grant been reduced by two-thirds, but it's still required to pay municipal taxes, which are greater than the remaining one-third. This is in 2017, Canada 150 year. Go figure. So increasingly, you will see that the network feels we are required to advocate for our members. Now, I just want to take you through our revenue streams a little more closely, and we're getting near the end of this presentation, and we're talking about finances, so I would like to reassure you, I am not here to make a pitch for funding without warning in the middle of your budget year. But I would like you to have more detail on how your county museums network survives. We provide benefits to both our members and the general public, not to mention regional tourism organizations and local tourism operators. We collaborate with local businesses on events and programming. This summary shows that we are largely self-funding through our members' fees and donations. Those cash donations are mostly from individual members who are able to provide a bit extra. Our partners, like the OVTA, MyFM, et cetera, they give us in-kind support and some cash. However, the network does not receive any funds from county itself or any individual municipalities. Your own municipalities, of course, may already be supporting member museums and heritage partners in your own backyard, and for that, I acknowledge your commitment to preserve and enrich heritage. I firmly believe it is vital to acknowledge and celebrate heritage. In Renfrew County, we are right here on the capital's doorstep, in one of the oldest settled regions in Canada. Plus, we have a pre-contact history that reaches back even further, according to latest studies, than we had ever thought. The current county's strategic plan identifies three themes: community well-being, economic opportunities, and community sustainability and viability. It specifies an ECDEV goal of increasing promoting the county as a cultural heritage destination. It also expresses a wish to provide desirable places to live, work, and raise a family. Lots of studies have demonstrated the positive effects on communities of culture and heritage, so I'm quite sure we're not going to be arguing about the value of heritage here in Renfrew County. Now, I did say there would be no pitch for money, right? But instead, I make this request: please make a commitment now to include the heritage sites and organizations of Renfrew County as stakeholders in county budget deliberations going forward. Please allow the Renfrew County Museums Network to collaborate with you, and, yes, if appropriate, to make a pitch for funding so that we can help you achieve the goals set out in your strategic plan. And to each of you here representing a municipality, please listen and be sympathetic to your local heritage organizations. They need your support as much as your municipality needs their continued successful existence. I feel we have to keep in mind the big picture. What is heritage? Heritage is the full range of our inherited traditions, monuments, objects, and culture. Most important, it is the range of contemporary activities, meanings, and behaviors that we draw from them. Heritage includes, but is much more than a collection of old things. Heritage is, or should be, the subject of active public reflection, debate, discussion. It's a contemporary activity with far-reaching effects. It can be an element of far-sided urban and regional planning. It can be the potential basis for local economic development. Heritage is an essential part of the present we live in and the future that we build. Now, that's the end of the formal part of this presentation. I'd be happy to take any questions. I have my colleagues here to help me with you ask some really difficult ones. So at this time, are there any questions, Counselor Visnisske Moore? Thank you. Good presentation. I guess my question isn't just as much as to our CAO. We have a policy here at the county of Renfrew that we not do any grants, and we've had that for many years, so if we were looking at this, I'm assuming, Jim, that would have to be a whole change of philosophy here at the county during our budget, just from my understanding?
Yes, I would say, if that may, Warden, yes, I would be correct. We do have a little grant policy regarding external organizations.
Thank you. Anything further? Counselor Stack?
Yeah, just a couple comments. We have a pretty significant, exciting museum in Aran Prior and Aran House as well, and then Brayside and Aran Prior, every year, a bunch of times, support both of those organizations. They can then do their presentations, and we deal with it on a local level, however. The other thing is, Renfrew County makes a significant contribution every year to OVTA, like tens of thousands of dollars, I think, maybe around 80 or 90 or something like that, more, maybe it's... Actually, I think it might have been closer to 4 million or something, wasn't it, for us to discuss it again?
Yeah, we increase it, that's right.
So, you know, from my perspective, that's part of that contribution, is to deal with these types of issues in the community.
Thank you, Counselor Stack. That's sort of what I was thinking when I see that the amount that the OVTA does with your organization, and you know, you've acknowledged them several times. We are the major funder of the OVTA, so in our own way, we do contribute to the museum network, but I'm sure I'm not the only municipality, a lower-tier municipality, that actually fully supports our museums, except for, you know, a few donations, so I do thank you for your presentation today. It was lovely. Does anybody else have anything further? Thank you. And gentlemen, thank you for being here, and madam, at this time, I am going to ask Counselor Love if she could do the next... I'm sorry. I... You know what? She... You brought it to the table, and I think that you deserve to...
See?
To acknowledge all your...
I'm trying to take your hand.
See? Yes.
No, I'm not. Thanks for the warning. You know how busy I am, so I hadn't really given any thought to doing this, but basically, I had asked County Council if they would support doing a photo for Bernadette McCann House for the Stand Up Against Violence campaign, and Erin, Erin Norris, is here for Bernadette McCann House. Actually, I met Erin two days ago when we were taking photos in Bury's Bay. So she's here, and anyone who would like to join in that photo to support their Stand Up Against Violence campaign, I hope you'll step forward, Stack and to county councillors. And Erin, would you please come up and bring the signs you brought? Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Love. I think at this time, Mr. Barber will be doing our photo, and we've got... Those signs look wonderful. I would ask that County Council and staff proceed to the back of the room, and Mike will do our photo. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome back, everybody. Please be seated. And at this time, I will ask Chair Sweet to begin with our, oh, following in Peter's footsteps. Is there any, oh, I've just lost this meeting, it's so sad. Mr. Hutton, is there any correspondence?
Thank you, Madam Warden. All correspondence have been forwarded to the appropriate committee.
Thank you, Counselor. You've always really enjoyed that. And I've never forgotten until today. At this time, I will ask Chair Sweet to give us the development and property report.
Thank you, Madam Warden, and members of County Council. We here Development and Property Committee wish to report and recommend as follows. The first few items are information items. First item is the Planning, Division, Activity Tracker Report, which can be found on page thirteen of your packages. Item number two is a lot addition for a cemetery in order for one of World Report Force. There's a request there to waive or forgive the nine hundred dollar severance fee. This was discussed at length at Development and Property, and you can see the letter that was received and the actual response on pages fourteen and fifteen. In essence, it was deferred as far as planning acted to the Land Division Committee for a report, and they have the authority to recommend back to Development Property and from there to the council, so that's where that went. Item number three is the Infrastructure, Natural Gas Infrastructure Program, thirty-one point five billion investment. You have to get onto the priority list and be part of that particular initiative. And you can see the deadline, mid-July, the thirty-first, very interesting individual groups. Item number four, the development of a watershed, Council of the Ottawa River. This is as a result of a private member's bill coming out of the federal government, MP David McGinty, and you can read the actual resolution there. We had a fair discussion on this particular situation, and somewhat concerned about the general direction, perhaps, and the lack of, not the time that the county being involved with this particular situation. It was directed by a committee that we'd asked the Warden to send a letter, which had been done, asking us, indicating that we should be very much involved in the very infancy of the discussions as they formulate this particular committee. I think it's actually key and essential, and you can see some of the background on that. There's a very large portion of the Ottawa River, obviously, goes through the county of Renford, and we are concerned about what the criteria may look like. Item number five, Muscat Lake Water Quality Initiative. Again, there's letters on page eighteen, nineteen, and twenty, letters coming in from the ministry with regards to what they feel has been done, or what they have been doing on that, which really, when you take a look at it, it doesn't really help the situation a great deal. And again, the Warden was asked to provide Minister Murray a follow-up letter, which you will see heading of page twenty on that particular situation. Item number six, Lady Seat of Wisdom Academy, and they have the ability, you know, to issue a degree, a bachelor's degree, which is good for various pay. I think that's good news at the ballot. Item number seven, you can find that on page twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four. That is the Algonkin Land Claim Negotiations Update. We haven't heard from the negotiators for quite some time. The hopping changes in terms of do the negotiators hopping, the Brian Crane is no longer there. Who's the material negotiator? Norm Knight is still on the file, and I need an update that's been given to the Warden now on that particular situation. But you can see there, this whole process is going forward, but it's going to be at least another five years before it gets to any completion of the actual land claim itself. Item number eight, good news in Renford County, and good news for the town of Armpire. You can see two businesses that are taking advantage of initiatives that are being announced in the province of Ontario, particularly around the nuclear initiatives, and it's nice to see these two businesses taking advantage of that. New Tech, Precision Metals in Armpire, as part of the Bruce Power Nuclear Generating Station there, they're operating fourteen point six billion dollars to operate that particular generating station, and good for Armpire to get that piece of that GE Attachi, kind of similar type of situation with steam boilers, et cetera, and as part of a can-do reactor, which is a global initiative coming out of the CNN. Under desk is a copy of the Economic Development Summit, that is going to be in Eos Ness, and it's been hosted by the Warden at Eos Ness in Eos Ness, and you can see there, June the twenty-first, from nine until three-thirty. And obviously, if you can make it, that would be great, and we encourage to do so. And economic development's key to the success of the County of Renford. The Ottawa Valley Tourist Association Tourism Conference, AGM, you can see the results of that, the new board of directors was elected, and you can see who they are. Congratulations to those who put their name forward and volunteered for that OVTA board. Also part of that were the Ottawa Valley Tourism Awards, and you can see who are recipients of that, and congratulations go out to them as well. And all that, you can see those who have been in the business and have been recognized for years in their respective areas, so congratulations to them. An update on the Provincial Siphon Network. This is a very important initiative that has been pushed by the OVTA and Public Work Department. Active Transportation, and you see there that the comments went on the Environmental Registry from April the twelfth to the twenty-sixth, and so you can access them from one. Core Agreement from the Province of Ontario for Small Business Enterprise Center was extended for the next two years. County Forest Tree Plant, congratulations once again to the students from Opie Youngo High School, who went out there and helped to plant thirty thousand trees. That's really quite something. I planted about a hundred and fifty of them, and I, my back just about gave out. That's a tough job to do, as I say. So, anyway, congratulations to them, and those thirty thousand trees in the granite ground in the forest. Number fourteen, Forest Ontario, the Heritage Tree Program and Green Leaf Challenge, you can find the information with regards to that on page twenty-six. Flooding, I'm going to defer that to Mike Nolan. Mike Nolan has an extensive report on this particular situation. So if you, if you mind, Warden, rather than get into it, that we're disparaging, it'd be better coming from Mike, who has completed an initiative on that. Item number sixteen, our long-term lease agreements. This is in essence, a kind of a housekeeping situation in which, as you recall, the revenues generated by those trail leases that were once with CP are now going to become to the County of Renford. This is just a letter with regards to that, initiating that process of funding control from the municipalities, or the trails, of those who leases with it, coming back to the County of Renford. Property Study, the Denver area, you see a sum of fifteen thousand dollars, as we know, in the budget for the Denver property study, and the lease is approximately fifteen thousand square feet of office space, so they're taking a look at that whole process to determine which way they're going forward. By now, I'm sure everyone has received an official invitation to attend the grand opening on the new OPP facility, a long-time company, but nonetheless, on June the ninth, two thousand and seventeen, it's officially going to be open. And I can remember me down there, and Paul and Spike, the inspector down there, wanting me to make sure that when we put the shovel in the ground, he wanted me, would it be okay if I brought three officers, because they don't believe this is actually happening? Well, it's up and running, and they're using it right now. It's a great addition to the southern part of the County of Renford. Item number nineteen is the Development and Property Committee Roadshow, and this is something that we can do over and over. Again, it hasn't really happened in the last couple of years, so we're going to re-activate that, and hold two or three meetings on page thirty. You'll see where we've been in the last, oh, I suppose, eight or nine years, and staff have been coming back with recommendations to go to wherever they recommend. Basically, what happens when we go to those areas, we invite local businesses to come in and talk to us about not only their successes, but some of the concerns that they may have. And I can tell you, out of some of those meetings in the past, high-speed internet was an issue, and we were able to get high-speed into certain areas as a result, up and around a meeting with the various communities. So, we'll be taking a look and seeing where that community will go to. Hundredth Year of the Vimy Ridge Battle, you see the revolution there, moved by the Chair, second by committee, DPCC seventeen oh five forty-three. The County Council in commemoration of the Hundredth Year of Vimy Ridge Battle, as well as Canada's one hundred and fiftieth anniversary celebration. Purchase up to eighteen oak trees from the Vimy Oaks Legacy Program to be distributed among the interested municipalities and are installed in various family facilities across the County of Renford. And further, that the funds to support the initiative, up to three thousand dollars, come from the County of Renford on the Polackie Fund Budget. And the background there, Canadian soldiers brought by after World War II. You can see eight ones from oak trees from Vimy Ridge, and planted those in the Tron area in a special project, as you leave saplings, and felt that this would be an ideal way to commemorate Vimy Battle and part of the one hundred and fiftieth anniversary. As part of that, I have to tell you, I was just told today that these, these trees are not necessarily always able to be planted in every municipality because of the hardness of the zones. And so this has got to be a review to see, for example, I don't know if one can be planted in Petalawai, no, or in Bonnashere, or where, so we have to take a look and review just to see where these trees can actually be planted. So bylaws, the bylaw, the bylaw on the CM, item number twenty-one, resolution number DPCC seventeen oh five forty-four, moved by the Chair, second by committee. The County Council passed a bylaw to enter into confidential holiday agreement with Canadian National Railway Company, and further, any costs in two thousand and seventeen associated with an environmental review of CM product will be taken from two thousand and seventeen provisions for one Polackie funds, to the maximum amount of ten thousand dollars. Again, we go back to the situation that we've talked about in the past with regards to the environmental issues that could or could not be in the rail bed. This has been an issue that, going back to County Council, this wisdom, because we couldn't get any clearance on the line previously, deciding not to take advantage of any gifting agreement. However, there seems to be a bit of a movement by CN to allow the engineer group to take a look at this and see if, in fact, there are any issues within the rail bed itself. And so, in order for that to take place, there would have to be a review by the engineers, but it has to be in a confidential situation, similar to the CP rail situation, where we got confidential information, and it was reviewed by the engineering people and wires to see if, in fact, there was any contamination in there. That is an ongoing process that we are going through to see if, in fact, where we should be going with any acquisition of the CN line. Lease Renewals, Renford County Housing Corporation, Ontario Works, resolution number DPCC seventeen oh five forty-five, moved by the Chair, second by committee. The County Council passed a bylaw to enter into a lease with the Renford County Housing Corporation, four fifty Old Iron Road, Renford, Ontario, for a five-year period commencing the first of September two thousand and seventeen, and expiring on the thirty-first of August two thousand and twenty-two. Other resolution number DPCC seventeen oh five forty-seven, seconded by the Chair. The County Council passed a bylaw to enter into a lease agreement with Ontario Works, four fifty O'Brien Road, Renford, Ontario, for a five-year period commencing September the first two thousand and seventeen, and expiring on August the thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two. These are table two lease agreements with the County of Renford Social Services and the Ontario Works, four fifty O'Brien Road. You can see that the lease rate of negotiation, a nine or two-point-five percent increase during the first year, and the existing leases expire October the thirty-first. Terminated new leases are for five years and expiring on August the eleventh day of twenty twenty-two. Other lease agreement with the Ontario Infrastructure and Lands Corporation Lease, resolution number DPCC seventeen oh five forty-seven, moved by the Chair, second by Council, by committee. The County Council passed a bylaw to enter into a lease with Ontario Infrastructure Lands for lease of Cal one one four five nine, four fifty O'Brien Road, for a period of five years, commencing August the first two thousand and seventeen, and expiring on July the thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two. Also tabled is the Standard Commission Fee Agreement, the CBR E-LM, it's the E-R-E, represents Ontario Infrastructure and Lands Corporation in lease negotiation, and the commission agreement is the program for this lease renewal, all of which are respectfully submitted by myself as Chair and committee members, him, on the grounds, block, and member.
Thank you, Chair Sweet. At this time, we'll go back to information item number one. Any comments, concerns? Number two, the lot addition. Counselor Donahue.
Thank you, Madam Warden. This is not specifically germane to the County of Renford, but when I read the letter from the proponent in this instance, it'll suggest proceeding with caution, because certainly it's my understanding we've been down this road in our township with respect to cemetery, and ultimately, should there be any financial default, the responsibility lies with the municipality. So I view, you know, the tone certainly contained in the letter from the proponent, that this is a shoestring, so I would certainly advise to proceed with caution.
Thank you, Counselor Donahue. I think that setting this to land division is the appropriate step at this time. Anything further? Number three, natural gas. Number four, the watershed council. Counselor Gibson.
Thank you, Warden. There are very many things, and shivers up and down my spine, but this is certainly one of them. This is just an example of bureaucracy, you want to mock, and I think the county should take a position that it's just a lot of bureaucracy that we do not need. Up and down Mariah, you can't pay a contractor who works anywhere near the Ottawa River. They are so frightened of breaking the numerous laws that are in place already to protect the shoreline, protect the watershed. Ministry of Natural Resources does an excellent job, and as far as I'm concerned, this is just bureaucracy going muck. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Gibson. Number five, the Muscat, and I did sign the letter, by the way, just this morning, so it will be sent. Number five, the Muscat Lake Water Quality. Counselor Miller.
Yes, I think when we were in committee, we were all mostly in agreement that there was some disappointment in the reaction from the provincial government, and I do appreciate that from those who spoke up about it. To me, it's not unlike twenty highway seventeen, you just can't get their attention, and we're not even on their five-year plan in their last budget. So, an update from- So an update from Whitewater. We're going ahead with something. As yous all know, we sought permission to close the street down for a dance week. Now decided that that will be a fundraiser for Muskrat Lake mostly. There's one other item that's coming out of there. And any support from any municipalities, if it's something that's possible or the county itself, there's a way, maybe, if it can be done within the reach of the county, to be a sponsor of the event, which would give it a lot of credibility. And it's our hope that it will become an annual event. And although we don't know where the money would be spent best yet, it's been decided to keep the money within the municipality to spend it on something that makes sense in regard to Muskrat Lake, hoping that in time, governments will change, situations will change, and that money will come into play. Now, I'm not sure the county is in a position to support groups like that from what I heard twenty minutes ago. However, I did bring, I did bring forms for sponsorship if anybody wants to do it. We're all open. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Miller. And once again, a follow-up letter will be sent to Mr. Morrow. Number six, the accreditation in Berries Bay. Counselor Visnaski Moore.
Thank you. I hope you'll pass on my, I'll write him a letter, but wow, that's a real, that school is grown and a real asset for Anawaska Valley. So I'll send him my, thank you, Adam Warden.
Thank you. Number seven, the Algonville Land claim. I did have an opportunity to meet with the new lead negotiator, Dakar, and Norm Lanty last month. It was just to touch base and sort of to let us know that, yes, we are probably still five years out. But it was a nice meeting. It was nice to meet Brian Crane's successor, Counselor Gibson.
Thank you, Warden Murphy. In the last couple of years, Adam Lanty and C.D. Pappen spoke to heads of councils to give them an update on the land claim negotiations. And when they came up ahead, I, for the roadshow to me, they asked if I had any concerns. And I said, I have no concerns whatsoever. And here's the reason why I have no concerns. There are too many people on both sides of the issue making too much money for this to ever want to come to a close. Thank you.
Anything further on seven? Number eight, the business expansions. Counselor Visnaski Moore.
And I'm going to send my congratulations to Armheart. Always good to see those kind of expansions in Brentford County. It's good for the whole county. So those companies need to know that they're, you know, that it's a great thing, their expansion. And what a good, good venture for the County of Brentford and for Armheart. Congratulations.
I echo those remarks. Anything further? Number nine, the economic development summit. I hope you can all join us in Eaganville on June twenty-first. I'm hoping you can all join us. Not seeing one ahead none. Number ten, the OVTA HEM. Counselor Robinson.
Thank you, Warden Murphy. I'm going to ask your indulgence a little bit because I am going to also refer to something stopping in the operations committee report that I probably won't be here for. It's a comment and a question, I guess. I see, I understand the OVTA and their cycling network and also the Ottawa Valley cycling and active transportation laws. They clearly made a presentation to us. Shortly after that, a number of us were at attendance at a workshop run by Cowan Insurance where, I have to tell you, there was a little fear presented at that point because the indication was that should we post that a road is a cycling route? The indication we got, and there's a high duty of care to take care of that road. Now, I, following the presentation from the Alliance, I did speak to one of the members who was actually a Renshaw Valley resident. And I said, you know, give us some idea of some roads that you know you might want to do. But we're sort of backtracking a little bit because not sure exactly where that places as far as liability issue is concerned. Now, I appreciate that the professor of art in college, Jeff Jackson, says that he's aware that the premiums are not going to go up. The issue is not premiums for me. The issue is that if someone is cycling on that road and something happens and they sue us because we have indicated that that is now a safe, for better words, cycling route, that puts our municipality and other municipalities, I think, at risk of a lawsuit. So all of that being said, I'm wondering, when the OVTA identifies roads in a specific municipality as part of their cycling network, are they taking on the insurance and the possible liability costs? Or am I just reacting to a fear that was presented to us at this workshop and maybe doesn't exist?
Thank you, Counselor Robinson. I think what I'd like to do is ask Mr. Kelly and Mr. Boland if they'd like to tag team a response to this. I mean, it's certainly always a concern with joint several liability and our increasing insurance premiums. But I'm wondering if we note them as a cycling lane and somebody gets hurt and sues us? Or if they're not noted as a cycling lane, they're probably still going to sue us? But maybe I could get some response from Mr. Boland, who I'd like to answer.
Thank you, Warden. Through you to Counselor Robinson. I'll try to answer the question best I can. And I may defer to my friend, Mr. Fosse, as well, given his experience in the insurance portfolio. My understanding is, through, as a result of discussions with legal counsel and with some of our insurance folks, is that regardless of whether or not we post that as a cycling route or an active transportation route, we have a liability. And in fact, we have a claim that came in last fall about an incident on one of our roads. It's not posted as a cycling route where somebody claims that they were injured as a result of something that happened on the road. So we have that liability. Bicycles are permitted under the Highway Traffic Act to be on the highways, on the roadways that we have. They are obligated, cyclists are obligated to play by the rules of the road and like other users of the road, some play better than others. But we do have a liability that goes along with that. In terms of the level of service, my understanding is we are still obligated to maintain our roads in accordance with the provincial regulations and the minimum maintenance standards that are set out under the Municipal Act. So as far as I know, and Jeff may have something else to add, our exposure is there and it's no greater or lesser than what it would be otherwise. Although some of the insurance folks would have to believe otherwise.
Thank you, Mr. Boland. Mr. Fosse, you have anything to add?
Thank you, Warden. And through you, I think the Director of Public Works has sort of summarized this quite nicely. When we first looked at active transportation as part of our Public Works program on an annual basis and sort of expanding that, we were also cautioned from the insurance industry about advertising that paved shoulder, if you will, as being a cycling lane and encouraging or enticing cycling on those lanes. So we took the position that we would widen the roadway for all the right reasons, but not advertise it as, you know, putting up signs and putting pavement markers to advertise it as cycling lanes. But Mr. Boland is correct. We have a liability to maintain that roadway and that paved shoulder up to the minimum maintenance standards as required by the province of Ontario. There is a heightened service level. At least our insurance folks are telling us there's a heightened service level requirements if you have designated cycling lanes. But in our case, we have road widened lanes that allow for active transportation. So I think the bottom line on this is regardless of what we do or don't do, if there's an incident that takes place, you can be pretty much guaranteed that our name would be on any statement of claim coming from that.
I saw Counselor Farr, then Counselor Visnaski Moore, Counselor Stack, and Counselor Robinson. Did you want to respond back just?
I did. Yes, and I recognize that, you know, regardless, there is a responsibility and, you know, the chance of it being sued by someone. It always exists no matter what. My concern was posting. If you did that, put us in more of a precarious situation and would be worse as far as being sued would be the result of very expensive for a municipality opposed to just whether it existed and not posted.
I do wonder about that. Mr. Fosse, what you just said was, you know, if we don't post them as actual cycling lanes, but what we've seen now is that the OVTA has denoted them as places to cycle. Does that heighten our liability?
That was my question.
Okay. Everybody wants the same question.
Yeah.
And through you, Warden. So our underwriters, so Jardine Lloyd Thompson, have advised us as part of our road widening program not to advertise those as specific cycling lanes. And so we've done, we've done the road widening as part of our active transportation strategy. We've made that available for all the right reasons. But we, as a municipality, have not advertised those as designated cycling lanes, if you will. So that's the advice that we've followed around this issue. And as Mr. Boland pointed out, even on some roadways that have not been widened for active transportation, an incident took place with a cyclist. There was an injury and so our name is appearing on a statement of claim regardless. So I'm not sure if I've answered that accurately or not. We have to kind of talk to the legal folks about whether or not we have a heightened exposure because of this provincial cycling network designation. But I think the bottom line is always, we are the vote authority. And so any incidents that take place that someone feels that they've been harmed as a direct result of our, perhaps our maintenance standards of that section of the roadway, we are going to be unable to appeal a statement of claim.
I for one wouldn't mind if you checked into that just because we are putting out maps under the umbrella of the County of Brentford. Counselor Farr.
Thank you, Warden. Through you to Mr. Boland. I guess my question really was, as you referred to, Asfamow. So I did a Google search and found two roads in North Elkhorn Riverport that have indeed as cycling routes. So after going to the same workshop as the Counselor Robinson went to, I went back to the council and we discussed it. And we're still trying to sort out our liability as to, now that the public knows there are two roads in North Elkhorn Riverport that are advertised as an excellent day cycling. Goes down Traymore Road, through Hagerty Richards, loops around Round Lake, comes back to North Elkhorn Riverport's Bullmont. Should we be putting up signs because it's advertised on the internet as a route or should we be holding ourselves liable negligent because we know it's being advertised as a cyclist's route, but we're not warning any of the drivers? And I would be just, the county should share the road signs, not identify the违法.
I think I'd like to hear the response from Mr. Fosse before. Bonnevilleshire Valley has an enormous cycling network. We actually have the tour of Bonnevilleshire. We advertise a lot of our wonderful cycling roads. So I will definitely, oh, Mr. Boland has a response.
Thank you, Warden. Through you to Counselor Farr. As we've said, cyclists are entitled to use the road. The prudent approach in this case may be to put up share the road signs. That allows, advises both the voters and the cyclists to expect other users on the roadway. And that may be the prudent approach. As Mr. Fosse said, our exposure is there regardless. We can, and we'll go back to the insurance carriers, JLT, and go back to our legal counsel and seek further clarification on that. But our understanding is our exposure is there and we have a duty of care that we have to provide on our roads for all road users. Unless it's designated as a bicycle route formally. So in the city of Ottawa and in the city of Toronto and other locations, they have formal bike routes and they establish a level of service and a different duty of care than as a share the road initiative as we have now in the County of Brentford. Our duty of care is the same as it would be otherwise.
Thank you. Counselor Stack.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. One is, assuming anybody's putting up any sign or advertising any sign to any county road has to get permission from the county that's county property. I don't think anybody, any organization would just go and do that. I wouldn't hope so. So if they're doing it with our agreement, then I'm concerned about our heightened liability. The OVTA I'm concerned about because we do significantly fund it and we know that's going to be an issue if there's a claim. We can't, we're not at this distance at a quarter of a million dollars a year. So I think there's some real issues there in terms of who's doing what and with what permission to start with. I was sitting here thinking years ago, Steve, when we get into the active transportation and remember sharing operations and always trying to divide the conversation from widening the shoulders and active transportation. Because in those days, active transportation meant cycling. Very good. That's what everybody had in mind. And we used to always have to pump, you know, ATVs, walking, everything to make sure that the scope was understood. So we paved the shoulders. And one of the questions in, and I don't recall the outcome of it, Steve, but when cyclists are by law have the right to be on the road and to be on the road, does that mean the shoulder of the road or are they to be on the highway? Okay, and I can't recall, but there was significant amount of debate over that because if provincial laws says they have the right to be on the highway and are to be on the highway, then the shoulder's another old question. If we pave the shoulders, that's perceived to be specific to that, you know? I think Jeff and Steve, both who are legal and maturest, always need to search this a little greater yet because we owe a response and a responsibility to all of the ratepayers of Brentford County in terms of our liability is here. Is it going to be here? And what's going to be the cost and risk for that? I'm not comfortable without some real detailed research into this and county control over what is signed on our roads.
Thank you, Counselor Stack. I also, I think one of the concerns also with the OVTA map is that it's denoting cycling routes in our lower tier municipalities. So not only on the county roads, but also on our roads. Counselor Visnaski Moore, Counselor Eamonn, and then Counselor W.
Hi, thank you. I agree with everything that Counselor Stack said. You know, we have to be cautious in that. But I want to remind the chambers that we had this discussion ten years ago when we brought ATVs out and everybody in the chambers was so nervous. I remember they were, you know, and rightly so because, but we, we had to convince our Director of Operations at that time and County Council that the economic benefit was, you know, great, which is also an economic benefit about cycling. This is the new age now. This is what people want. In my municipality, we get requests all the time. They want bicycle routes and they want to be able to do that. So even though I agree everything with Walter, I think we have to be very cautious. We need to find out the answers. But I'll remind County Council that with economic development, often there's risk. And we, the people that voted against the ATV bylaw here at the county were scared of that risk. And I'll tell you that we haven't had the kind of outrage and, you know, people haven't sued the pants off of us because of that. And it was very nervous when those people voted for it here at the county, but it has worked. So and I agree with Walter, though. We need to get those i's dotted and the t's crossed. But I think we have to, like I said, economic development often has risk involved and we have to weigh, County Council has to weigh that risk. We can't stop them. They're going to be there whether we like it or not. And really, truly, it is a great benefit. This is the age of bicycling, just the way it is. So I agree, we should get all those answers, you know, questions answered. But, you know, we have to really look at the balance.
Thank you. Counselor Eamonn.
Thank you. Couple of comments, although I always enjoy a different A couple of comments, although I always enjoy a different audience pool of insurance coverage. I think I'll pass on this one. Please cut down all the maple trees. You know, we have people driving around following the maple trees. That's quite a distraction. I imagine our risk is quite horrendous. The artist tours, take those signs down. We don't want people looking for our shops in the fall and whatnot. So I think, you know, I think we can mitigate our risk with the Share the Road campaign. That's a pretty significant decision point to delineate the shoulders, the white lines, we're not cycling lanes and we're actually promoting all sorts of activities. So, you know, if the insurance comes and hang their hat on cycling, then we should be giving a reduction for every frigging sign they put up. It's a shared road. So if they can't have both ways and they love to stamp people in because next week or eighteen months from now they're going to ask for an increase if they have to say. So I would not be too worried about this. I'd take a longer view and look at all of our, look at all of our activities. I would suggest you that blaming leaf to a property is more liability than cycling and walking because people are looking for the perfect photo shoot and they're not watching where they're going. I haven't heard of anybody suing anybody else because we were ending the stock to a Prius. But anyway, thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Donahue.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. The, I think most of the comments here, I'm in full agreement with the risk is never going to be eliminated. Nor are we ever going to be fully indemnified against any risk. I wasn't at the, most of this conversation was predicated upon a presentation that was done by insurers or several county councils. We're attendants. My own, certainly these were a topic we got to Operations Committee. Given the response letter that we had from Mr. Thieleheimer to his delegation here, I took some issue with him holding a person who was putting forward as experts on the insurance here. So I actually did a Google search, municipalities and civil suits from bicycles. And there are quite a number actually in recent history. I would remind County Councils, as I'm sure it's not buried too deeply, joint and several as an enormous issue that everybody is thoroughly aware of. So the notion of the municipal act limiting our liability, I would do love that that were so or is not so. So what I liken this to, all right, one more thing too with respect to liability, one of the cases that I even went to search, I believe it was in Vancouver, and a cyclist encountered a cut where there was some public works being done and there was a two-inch drop. And they had put up cones and barricades. And also when it came to court, one of the people from the company that was actually hired to do this, public works, said, oh yes, the cyclists should just ignore those signs. But ultimately, when it became known that they were ignoring the signs, then there was a different duty or a different obligation by the municipality. Whether we sign these things or not, I don't think it enhances or diminishes any of the liability or any of the risk of suit being brought, whether frivolous or legitimate. And from the perspective of economic development, I have to certainly agree with Counselor Emo. You know, a ship in port is safe, but that's not what it's built for.
Thank you. Counselor Robinson gets the last word.
Thanks. Since I started, I guess I have to finish it. Again, my absolutely support economic development, cycling is, is big and is growing in potential of three quarters. I just want to know what the risk is. And so then we have all of the answers. We can decide whether or not it's risk that we want to take or don't want to take. But I think until we get a legal opinion, we're making decisions on a competitive basis other than from insurance.
Oh, I thought I was shutting this down. Counselor Doncaster.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Just, I'm going to follow Counselor Emo's lead in building the insurance file if you are, none of us would sidewalk, wouldn't have sidewalks anymore. Outside of the heightened service levels that was mentioned, is there a different minimum maintenance standard if the road is designated as cycling routes?
That's a very good question.
If I may, Madam Warden, through you to Counselor Doncaster, the short answer is no. At least as far as I'm aware, under the current minimum maintenance standards. Will that change at some point in the future? Possibly. But under the current minimum maintenance standards, I understand there is no different level of service or minimum maintenance requirement under current legislation.
Thank you. Very good question. All right. Counselor Sweet gets the last word.
That's what I did. Anyway, yeah, all very interesting. And let me just say, I believe we've had an opinion on this. This goes back about 10, 15 years ago when they widened the shoulders on Pedawalla Boulevard and the natural fact, put little white cycle markings on those areas. And that was a concern that was brought up at that point in time with regards to what we're hearing right here, how much of a liability we have as a height. As a result of that opinion that we received, and it goes back about 12 years ago, even though they widened the roads and they widened the Mendoran Road, for example, they don't put the bicycle icons on the road anymore for that reason. It was felt at that time that because that was there, that would heighten the exposure to the County of Brentford. I have to tell you, those white lines are still on the Pedawalla Boulevard. So this was looked at many years ago, but given the explosion of cycling within Brentford County or within Ontario or Canada, I think it's important enough of us to take another look at this and find out, you know, where the law stands as far as cycling and where the insurance industry stands as far as this is concerned. But I think we've, as I say, we have had an opinion about 10, 12 years ago.
Thank you. All right, now we're going to move on. It was a good discussion team. We've done number 11. Number 12, the core agreement through small business. Seeing none. Number 13, the county forest tree plant. Good work, Counselor Sweet. Hope you bent at the knees when you were planting those trees. Number 14, the heritage tree program. Number 15, the flooding. Yes, we have our expert, Mike Nolan, on all things flood coming up in the health report. Number 16, the Elkhorn Trailies. Number 17, the property study. Number 18, the OPP facility. Hope everybody can make it to that opening. Under resolutions, the commitment to the two or three-year, the road show, taking DNP around the county. Number 20, the trees for the Vivian Ridge celebration. One of the other things that came about was when Mr. Kelly was thinking that we should all have a plaque when we eventually plant our tree. I guess we're going to have to find appropriate places to plant them. But what Mr. Kelly was suggesting is that all of our plaques are the same. So perhaps we can get some wording for that. Thank you. Number 21, the CN update. Counselor Donahue.
Thank you, Madam Warden. I, my question here, this is a fairly extensive agreement and I am somewhat reassured by Counselor Sweet's statement that this is very similar to what was done with CP because as I went through this, I'm uncertain and predicating this upon at least a basis that there is no issue. But what, what sort of obligation does this body have to disclose information that we may be bound to do so by regulation? I'm wondering to what extent we can rely on a confidentiality agreement to provide, to identify us from knowing something that perhaps is not required.
Well, all I can say is we had a similar type agreement with CP and it never left these chambers. And that's just, we go into camera on this particular situation after it has been reviewed by engineers and by staff to find out where we are with this particular situation. That's what we did with the CP. It worked very well and had to be found anything in there, then there would have been a decision made and brought forward with the CP. But it was all in camera as far as the engineering information is concerned. Without going into confidentiality agreement, they will not release the engineering reports that they have on part, and neither will the CP. So I can only tell you that it would come here and it would be dealt with after a review by engineers and lawyers in an in-camera session. That would be a requirement of CN as it was with CP.
Thank you. Counselor Robinson.
Just a comment, Ward Murphy. To me, this is a significant shift and a positive shift for CN. When it was just three municipalities trying to negotiate, they flatly refused to allow us to see the engineer's report until we signed that gifting agreement. So the fact that that's not being required now, I think is a really positive shift. And again, we need, we need that information to make a intelligent decision about where we're going forward. So I'm really pleased to see the movement and the fact that CN is still willing to negotiate and discuss with us is very, very positive.
I agree. We actually went through the same process in our own township and had our engineers review and then went into camera to ensure that we followed the confidentiality agreement to the letter. And I think it did work very well with the CP. And my hope is that the CN, being another connecting link, would wield the same wonderful benefits to Brentford County. Counselor Sweet, did you have another word?
I think you can cover it. I can tell you that had we not received the information from CP, excuse me, and it was a comfort level that I was able to deliver to County Council, then I can tell you that the CP line, I mean, I won't, would probably not have been acquired by the County of Brentford if it was a comfort level, given the information that we have received and the engineers could take a look at and lawyers could advise us of where we're going. I don't disagree with what Counselor Robinson is saying. For the last 25 years, they haven't been able to move or didn't want to move on this particular issue. And I think I've mentioned that before as the impediment to move forward on acquiring the assets through a gifting agreement with CN.
Anything further? Number 22, the two lease agreement agreements. And number three, the Ontario infrastructure lease rule. The report as a whole, can I get a move for it?
We'll do that.
All those in favor, opposed if any. I think we'll move right along with the health report if Chair Biszuski Moore would like to. Thank you. Members of County Council, we, your health committee wish to report and recommend as follows. Information item number one is the resident population. Number two is the DFID program. Number three is the flood update. I'm assuming we'll get Mike to talk at the end of the report about the flooding. Mike, are you okay with that? Number four is the DRDC visit. Five is the Silver Change Challenge. Number six is the provincial budget and how it impacts the long-term care. The health committee, our schedule, we're going to have our next meeting at Bonnershire Manor and the meeting in September at the lodge. And I want to thank Shelley for both of those. We always enjoy going to the home. It's good for the committee to go and see our residents and have a tour of our beautiful buildings. Number eight is the outbreak status. Nine is the quality inspection. A lot of information about that. Number 10 is the fire safety at the lodge. And then number 11 is the foundation. And I'm always so proud of the foundation. They're so, you know, very, very active and raise a lot of funds for residents. Number 12, I have to apologize, I wasn't able to be there at the annual volunteer recognition. I heard that it went well. And again, I want to apologize to Shelley that I wasn't able to make it. The Bonnershire Manor Foundation, number 13, they too, they raise a lot of money for the home and the residents and I want to congratulate them as well. Resolutions, number 14, resolution number HCC 170537, moved by Chair, seconded by committee. The County Council supports the Lanark County Resolution requesting provincial support in relation to the opioid crisis. Background, a resolution from the Council of the Corporation of the County of Brentford is attached as appendix one. The resolution outlines the seriousness of the opioid crisis facing communities throughout Ontario, all of which is respectfully submitted as myself as Chair, committee members, Doncaster, Donahue, Farr, Gibson, Kingsbury, and the Warden Group. Thank you, Chair. We'll go back to information item number one, comments, concerns. Number two, the Defibrillator Program. Number three, Mr. Nolan, or Chief Nolan, if it's all right, if you will circle back to this. Number four, Defense Research and Development. Number five, the Silver Chain Challenge. Chief Nolan asked me to remind you all that it does begin tomorrow and after our lengthy discussion on cycling. It goes until June 30th. There is a website, www.silverchainchallenge.ca. And if you want any more information, we can certainly pass these out. I hope that lots of you will participate. Counselor Emo.
I'm pleased to announce in cooperation with Chief Nolan's department, the town of Brentford, who is having a cycling with council event on Saturday at 10:30. Do you care to join the lone member of council and might be cycling? So we've advertised into the schools, but I think we're going to get a nice response. So we're hoping to kick off.
What a lovely idea.
What a lovely idea.
That is a really nice idea. Anything further on Silver Chain Challenge? Say about three things first. Number six, the provincial budget. Number seven, the health committee will in June will be at Bonnershire Manor. Six, at the lodge. Number eight, the outbreak status. Number nine, the quality inspection. Number 10, the fire safety at Mary Machine Lodge. I like the word exceeds building requirements. That always makes me happy. The lodge foundation update. What a lovely, lovely facility that is. The volunteer recognition dinner. I was so happy to be a part of that. It's a lovely evening. Number 13, the Bonnershire Manor. And number 14, the opioid crisis, the resolution. The report as a whole, can I get a move for it? I saw a move. Would that include Mike? Yeah, okay. Right, sorry. Mike, you just want to make sure his report is part of it? I just, we should have had you do a proper presentation maybe.
How can you do your next one for your colleagues?
After some of these debriefing meetings happen? Okay, so let's just, we'll go back to number three and we'll have Mike speak briefly on it today. But I think that it touched so many of our municipalities and although they keep calling it a 100-year flood, it does make me nervous that it'll be a, you know, every five-year event. So it's probably a good thing for all of us to know in all of our municipalities about the realities of what happened at the end of April. Mr. Walton.
Sure, we have to give you a preliminary report through, Madam Warden. So as you all know, your municipalities and your staff have done an excellent job in terms of engaging your communities. There's been widespread disruption throughout the county in people's lives. And I think especially this weekend as the floodwaters have continued to recede because there are still those affected by floodwaters, that as cottagers and others return to the community, we'll see, you know, further emotional response as well as a need for further physical response in terms of removing debris. The county did pull together a debris document that's available on our website that can assist any... anyone in terms of re-entering their home, how to disinfect, how to remove debris, how to work with public health and your local offices based upon waste recovery and other components of that effort. I'm very proud of the staff across the county. Your municipal staff were all heart and all hands and boots, sandbagging and helping people in their times of distress. The CEMCs met daily for well over a week to share information. And I think that that in itself is to be celebrated, that the CEMCs in your municipalities came together, shared information, shared resources, shared sandbags. And I think as a result, the impact on the individual residents was lessened to a degree as a result of that level of cooperation. So kudos to all of you. In part, we put some effort towards trying to get common situational awareness tool available to the public. So both our friends in the development of property and in public works collaborated with your municipalities. So thank you to all of you who shared road closure information. We were able to make that available live to the community through a new mapping tool called Municipal 511. And shortly after we began that effort, it was recognized and replicated by the County of Prescott and Russell. So they saw that as a best practice tool and we were able to help them in terms of adopting that. So really you had a good swath of Eastern Ontario and the Upper Ottawa and Lower Ottawa Valley that was providing a common situational awareness around road closures and disruptions to the public. So I'm going to gather up some additional statistics, Madam Warden, based on your suggestion. We also have considerable drone footage and photographs available. And Steve Sellers is continuing across the county to work with your municipalities and your ratepayers around the eligibility for disaster relief funding. It is a process and it is a new process. So keep asking really good questions, tough questions of Steve, so that the minister understands how the program is and is not working for your municipality or for your ratepayers because I think they're really paying attention, given the enormity of the situation. So I'll leave it there. Madam Chair, if there are any questions, happy to answer.
Thank you, Chief. I just want to say, I, obviously, that horrible day, it occurred to me that it wasn't just Beaune Shear Valley that I had to take care of, that I wanted to make sure that I drove around and I saw some of your volunteers, the fire departments, the paramedics just did an amazing job of keeping people calm and giving out information. I know in our own municipality and I know in some of the others, we had high school students out filling sandbags. And just the general nature of the human spirit really, it shone through this devastation. And I know that we do have some of our seasonal residents that are arriving now and came up on the May 2, 4 weekend. And I know that it was quite difficult on them. But I think that the joint effort of everybody, staff, our roads department, paramedics, fire, volunteers, everybody came together and it was certainly, although sad, a very proud moment to see our community and how resilient we really are. Counselor Busnesski Moore?
Thank you. My municipality, as you know, was hit very hard. We're the reservoir, so the water comes in and then it disperses. So I just want to tell you that I did have occasion, I drove to Blue Mountains for the O-Sub conference and I got an opportunity to spend about 15 minutes with Minister Moro. And we talked in length about the flooding. And he gave me his promise that he would be prepared to meet with me. And I asked if you, Madam Warden, could accompany me to that meeting to talk about the O-DRA program and how it falls short. There are many things that the program doesn't cover and, you know, seasonal. He said, well, seasonal. I said, some people live in a tiny apartment and all that they save for is that little cottage on the lake. It's not like they're flowing out with money and they lost everything. And that's not fair. The program has to recognize that everyone's a taxpayer. So he did say that he would be prepared to sit down and we could bring our concerns and he'd give consideration. So Madam Mayor, I will just, Madam Warden, I will be trying to set up that meeting with him. And I hope that you would join me. You know, we'd have to go to Toronto to meet with him. But he did give me his commitment that he'd be prepared to talk with us because of the magnitude of damage that we've had in the County of Brentford. And for myself, KHNR, we had a public meeting. 200 people showed up to tell us that, you know, enough is enough. We have to, we have to deal with the problem. So I hope that you'll join me, Madam Warden.
I certainly will. Thank you for that invitation. I had a sort of a similar conversation with Minister Moro where when he phoned to say yes, he would be enacting the O-DRA program, I was very thankful. But by the end of the conversation, I also realized it only helps certain people. And I knew that there was going to be some amount of outcry. The members of the Golden Lake Property Owners Association, and I don't know if some of your lakes have associations, they did send a letter to Minister Moro this week outlining sort of the deficiencies in the O-DRA program. Obviously, I think on Golden Lake, it's 75% are seasonal westones. So we certainly will have to continue to fight for them. But absolutely, we can go and meet Minister Moro and have discussion. Thank you for that. Anything further, Counselor Love?
Thank you, Madam Warden. I think also some discussion needs to be had about the Municipal Disaster Recovery Assistance Program. Because what we're discovering now through our treasures, having input and learning how to go about applying, we're finding that it's going to be extremely difficult. A lot of things are going to be turned down purely for exceptionally bizarre reasons. For example, we lost a good chunk of Upper Rosenthal Road because a beaver dam burst with the exceptional amount of water this spring. We're being told we need a picture of that beaver dam before and after. The beaver dam is in Brunelman Dock and Raglin on private property. Why would we have a photo of it before? For example, just as an example. Yet it did have a direct impact. So it is these details that our staff are now desperately slogging through trying to deal with to determine what is going to be eligible, what isn't going to be eligible, what kind of documentation we are going to need in order to make a decent application. And will we achieve 3% of own taxation in that process? How much time will they spend seeing if we're going to achieve that? And what is that cost going to be? So there are certainly some issues for the municipalities as well. And I certainly am very aware of the seasonal, that is a serious problem. Let's also not forget that our municipalities suffered some damage and our taxpayers are going to have to in the end cover that if we can't get any funding. So if you could please include that there are issues with this new program as well. That's very important.
Did you complain to the Mayor of Brunelman Dock and Raglin about the beaver dam?
I have to admit that we requested that the beavers all return to their cameras. I could carry on with that explanation, but you probably would end up being evicted from this chamber.
Counselor Busnesski?
Just, I wanted to say that to Counselor Love, as the deputy, as one deputy warden, I would invite that you could come as well to our meeting in Toronto if you're available. The three of us could represent the county and our municipal. So when I try to set that up and if I'm successful, then I'll invite you to sit.
Excellent. Counselor Donnie here?
Just listening to the conversations here, it seems to me that it might be reasonable, perhaps Minister Moro would come here to where the actual disaster occurred rather than everyone making a delegation to our department. It just seems like it might be inappropriate recognition of the traumatic events in the fellow community here in the spring.
It's an excellent suggestion. I did have an opportunity to speak with Minister Lallong, who is the Minister of Community Safety and Correctional Services. And she also indicated that she'd like to come and see and meet with Chief Nolan as well. So perhaps that's, that might be a better way to go, have him boots on the ground where he can actually see the problems that we faced over those couple of weeks. Anything further?
Okay, I am going to be in contact with him then. So should the direction be that I invite him here? If he says that he's not available, can I go back to my intended having? When I spoke with him, he said if I would, if I was prepared to drive six hours to talk to him at Blue Mountain about my flood, then he thought maybe I wouldn't mind driving to Toronto to meet with him. But again, I have no problems with Counselor Donahue's suggestion. So if, with your permission, Madam Warden, I will be speaking with him. I will ask if he could come to the county. And if he says that he's not available, then I'll try to set that up as planned. Is that okay? Thank you. Yes. All right. Anything further? The report as a whole? Oh, Counselor Doncaster?
I did have something on that. If I could ask you, Nolan, just to move back just to say this briefly?
Absolutely.
Just, I just wanted to highlight, pardon me. I just wanted to highlight the fact that so what we're seeing here of the increase in the raw food budget, my numbers could be a little bit out. But just for counsel's information, this is the effect of what $15 million will do in the long-term care system. And that's a small amount, although I believe Maschidi would agree that it is certainly helpful. But the $15 million doesn't go a long way. It's spread it across every resident in the long-term care system in this province. I would also add that while sitting in Toronto on the Garden Expressway one day, there was a report specifically on this increase in food, the food budget for long-term care. And there was some call-in, call-in people to the radio show talking about the quality of food in long-term care. And I would point out that out of the three or four people that were there, the consensus around the table was the fact that the food that is prepared and provided to residents in municipally-owned long-term care centers was better than the long-term care centers that are run by corporations for profit. So there was certainly a difference. And I think that's probably true and probably spills over into the long-term care centers in our county.
It's very interesting. Counselor Busnesski Moore?
I want to remind County Council that the prisoners in prisons are, get more money than our seniors. The province gives them more for raw food per diem than we get at the long-term care for our seniors.
Much like Counselor Grunt's beavers, I believe that, love. And the report as a whole? And can I get a mover, please? Sorry, that's my job. I saw move. All those in favor? Opposed, if any? Seeing none, rose this one chair. Okay. I think we'll take, if everybody can be doc at 20 to 1, please. I think that gives us half an hour. Counselor Sweet's very hungry. Thank you, gang.
Grab the, grab the case.
Good afternoon, everyone. I hope you enjoyed lunch. You're seated. Thank you. This time, we will carry on with our committee reports. I'm going to turn this over to Vice Chair Rynwell with the Social Services Committee.
Thank you, Warden. Once I get the sphere of chocolate off my paper, I'll be able to tease it on. So we, your Social Services Committee, wish to report and recommend as follows. Under information, item one, 2016 and 2007 Brentford County Social Health Registry Waitlist statistic comparison. As you'll note, in April of this year, we are up by 37. Doing all the applicants on the waitlist, we're by 80. Looking at the total of all applicants on the waitlist. And we're actually down somewhat on the eligible SPP on the waitlist. The SPP, they're special priority for family clients. Item number two, childcare statistics. 2016, 2017 childcare fee subsidy statistic comparison. 2017 is a 312, down by 16. And children, down by 74.58 from 475 last year. Current county's central age waitlist, the total is 307. So the 2016 and 2017 integration coordinator stats comparison, total act of files are currently at 120, down by 5 in last year. And receiving resource funding, 61, down by 61 last year. Item number three, the Ontario Word of Case Rule statistics. 2016, 2017 monthly case rule comparison. As you know, it's up by a 4.7% from last year, 1277 to 358. Item four is the material renovation program. The County of Brentford once again offered programs assisted individuals to access funding for updates to their homes and to enhance their quality of life. And you'll note below, there's applicants that have received, there's a total of 155 applicants received. And out of those, 47 have been ordered to be enhanced and pranked for further evaluation. Item five, the housing kids community challenge update. Item six, collaborative agreements with Brentford Youth, Brentford County's new strategy. Item seven, resolutions on sharing community hubs. Resolution number SS-CC-17-05-334, moved by Chair, seconded by Committee, if the county requests that Brentford County place be included as a community hub on the province of the material database. Item five, bylaws. Number eight, County of Brentford childcare policy revisions. Resolution number SS-CC-17-05-35, moved by Chair, seconded by Committee, that the following revised childcare policy be approved. That bylaw, 5809, we amended for this purpose. That's CC 09 Integration Services Referral and CC 13 Integration Services File Quotient, all of which is respectfully submitted by Chair Debbie Robertson, myself, the co-chair, and Committee Member Tewol, Farr, Kingsbury, Erving, and Stock.
Thank you. We'll go back to number one, the waitlist statistics. Counselor Donnie here?
Thank you very much, Madam Warden. Through you to the Director, to Minister Moro. I just went back to search for 2014 and when I went back to the 2014 report, it included 2013 data, so. Since 2013, give and take, because I know it does rise and fall, but generally across the board, the waitlist is approximately 25% higher than it was four years ago. And I know your President, Mr. Moro's predecessor, used to always refer to, a lot of these data that you're seeing are, can often be viewed as the carry in the whole life with respect to the overall economy and how it is certainly playing out within Brentford County. Is this information that is, you know, being forwarded, I guess, to regular discussion now about a national housing strategy? And are these numbers that are being used as leverage, that are getting to the right people, that are demonstrating the absolute need for more resources to be made available for social housing?
Thank you, Warden. Through you to Counselor Donnie. To just get to the point, I think, of your question is, so the data that we continue to keep, does it get to those folks that need it? Absolutely. So our staff participate in a number of different forms, both provincially and elsewhere. And we continue to convey this data. Carol sits on a Seaway Group, an Eastern Ontario group, that talks about the continuing growth and demand in our waitlist. And that is shared with the province. So there's a number of these shared forums or tables where we sit with the province and to a certain degree, the federal government as well, with Vivian Chi, who is the liaison for CMHC, is also taking our data. So for much of what we do, we are actually obligated to submit our annual waitlist information back to the province. So they collect that, that data. So they collect that, that data. You know, the whole process is extremely data-driven. And what we do in terms of future funding, we need that data to substantiate every application that we make. And Warden, if you're okay, I'll just advise committee as council as directed. So you're aware, we just did submit the application as directed by committee and County Council for the Home for Good program, looking for additional financial resources. So that went in on time, and I believe that deadline was May 19th. That submission went in. And again, that is the ask for additional resources for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further on one? Number two, the childcare stats? Number three, the EOW case load? Number four, the Ontario Rent Feds Program? Counselor Donahue.
Again, Madam Warden, through you to Mr. Morrell. By what means are these? That number scored out of 155, 55, that arrive at 47?
Excellent questions, Mr. Morrell.
Thank you, Warden. Through you to Counselor Donahue. There is the basic criteria for the program in terms of the value of the house and the income, family income. And then the criteria is a first-come, first-served basis.
Thank you. Anything further on four? It's incredible how many applications you were able to process. And I assume this is it?
No, we're going to be oversubscribed.
Number five, the Healthy Kids Community Challenge. Number six, the collaborative agreement with the youth. Number seven, Making Brentford County Place an Ontario Help. Number eight, the childcare policy? The report as a whole? Can I get a mover?
So, Madam Warden.
Thank you. All those in favor? Opposed, if many? And I will turn this over to Counselor, or Chair Stack for Finance and Administration report.
Thank you, Warden. But you recall, FNAI had a crucial meeting early?
Oh, yes, you did. I'm sorry.
So my Vice Chair chaired the meeting and will give the report today.
Quite right. Counselor Doncaster.
Will do. We hear Finance and Administration Committee has to report recommend as follows. Number one, council renumeration, given Treasury Report to Hattie on Page 87. The Treasury Report that begins on page 88. Number three, renumeration of Brentford County District Health Unit. Counselors will recall that County Council requested some further information on the order, and that's included in there, starting on page 13. Item number four, 2017 tax policy update. Item number five, elected laptop maintenance. It's requested that at the June 28th County Council meeting, that all County Council members leave their laptops for the IP department use maintenance on them. Number six is an update on the ransomware virus outbreak that most of us publicly read or heard in the news and the effects or the non-effect that it had on the county systems up to that point. Item number seven, Eastern Ontario's Warden Caucus, press release, media release, if found, page 119. Item number eight, the building code subject tanks issue can be found on page 121. This issue certainly created a great deal of attention through the efforts of a number of people, including the extraordinary focus of Counselor Gibson. Like Dawda, oh, Counselor Gibson persevered in his quest and the results of that are the ministry not going forward on this issue. So congratulations to all involved, and certainly our own Counselor Gibson. There was a couple of other issues relating to the Bill 68 with respect to the requirements of alternates to this body. The fact that the integrity commissioners' ability to launch an investigation on their own initiative is no longer a concern. And then the tree camp vegetation issue. Furtherly to that, item number 10, the Canada 150 Advisory Committee. Item A is the time capsule and deadline for the rocks are today, I believe. Rose went and inspected to see if all of the rocks were here. I don't know if we have to do that, but that's okay. Item B, an update on barbecue that we'll be having on June 28th. And just to remind that County Councilors that were asked to wear jeans and then also pay $5 to wear jeans. Item number C, member of plaques that, Warden, we're free over, will be presenting, remember to plaques to all municipalities starting June 28th, Canada 150 celebrations. Item D, a reminder that the Canada 150 website is up and running. There's currently 30 fans posted, and all municipalities are encouraged to submit events to their, request from the school board for participation in Canada 150 celebrations from the Brentford County District School Board. And item F, the county has purchased a number of banners that will be installed in flag holes here in the administration building. Resolutions, item number 11, resolution number FACC 150559, moved by Chair, seconded by committee. The Finance and Administration Committee recommends that County Council support the resolution of the township of Laurentian Valley as follows. Whereas the township of Laurentian Valley has been adversely affected by the assessment review board assessment decisions for home people lost in heat set Canadian jail, which translated to municipally-owned reimbursement of $250,000 or 6% of our tax levy. And whereas the county of, I'm sorry, the Council of the Township of Laurentian Valley is concerned of elective time, the decision process takes for impacts, assessment review board to come to a decision. The above decision took between three to five years to be completed. Therefore, be resolved that the county, that the Council of the Township of Laurentian Valley requests the assessment review board appeal process be revised to ensure that all appeals are concluded within a maximum of 18 months' timeframe. The background is there, it's pretty much spelled out in the, in the resolution itself. All of which is respectfully submitted by Chair Olster Stack and committee members, myself, Counselor Donahue, Warden Murphy, Counselor, Counselor Robinson, Counselor Street, and Counselor Visas T. Moore.
Thank you. We'll go back to information, item number one. Number two, the Treasurer's Report. Number three, the Health Unit Remuneration. Counselor Farr.
Through you, Warden. I just have a quick question as to, I'm looking at an email here where certain members are as little as 13 meetings, another member is 56 meetings. They all sit on the standboard. Why is there huge fluctuation?
I can turn this over to Counselor Emo, but they do now have subcommittee structures. There has been sort of a history of, of, I don't know what you mean, but it hasn't run very well, and they now have a structure in place. But I will pass this over to Counselor Emo.
Also, I can chew that most significant point is that my number 13 didn't truly reflect the number of meetings I attended. 13 is what I was paid to attend. The rest of the time, if I'm in the area of other business, I don't submit for an honorary. So in fact, I probably attended 35 or 40 meetings, as I'm guessing with Counselor Brian Walden and Donahue as well. So the fact that it says 13 is accurate because that's what I was paid for. But I was here last year performing or in committee in the morning, and then went to the health unit in the afternoon, and I didn't submit for mileage more than honorary because I was already being paid to do something else.
Thank you. Anything further? Counselor Farr.
Through you, Warden. When I was reading the document, it also stated $175 for the meeting. But as I understand it correct, the board has pre-done that, so that it's $75 for a meeting? So if I attended two meetings in that day, I could, if I would, put in for two?
Counselor Emo.
Yes, you could. But what I was doing was delineating between the fact that we already paid to be in kind of a 4 something as a member of County Council at the time. Did you appropriate bill in two instances when I was in St. Billy's? So that might explain that, that's part of my numbers. There is the opportunity for a member, if you're here for a meeting in the morning or something at the health unit, and then have something else, and then come back in the afternoon, there is the opportunity, should they feel that, that they would be paid twice for attending two separate meetings at the same day in this building and/or this building or another health unit property somewhere else in the county or outside of the county too. So there is that, there is that flexibility in the, in the procurement or in the remuneration by law of County Health.
Thank you. Anything further? Counselor Arnold.
Thank you, Warden. Through you. I would just also want to point out too that there was, and the numbers, mine were higher than some, but some of those, most of that was due to regular meetings. However, during the course of time, I was involved with the ad hoc hiring of the committee. And there were days where we were going through the hiring process, starting at 7:00 in the morning, and carrying on through and then having our, which was not covered, none of that was covered within the, because it wasn't part of their procedure. And we would have a health community meeting later on in the afternoon. I would be covered for the health community meeting. I was not covered for any of the, of the interview itself. So, so not all the information, but the information there is true, though that's the information that I had written in as far as my time there or the mileage. But as Counselor Emo said, if I had a meeting here at Brentford County, I would not have put in for the mileage, I'd be, I'd warrant the other.
Thank you. Anything further? Counselor Farr.
Through you, Warden. I was just trying to get clarification because as a person from the outside looking in, when I see that only certain meetings are marked here, it's just bursting thoughts into you. Had I been into any, any of my question?
Thank you. Counselor Arnold.
No offense taken. I just wanted to, you know, just wanted to make it clear what was going on. And there's a lot of, like I said, there's a lot of time that was spent, and there was no compensation for it at all. Not even mileage in some cases. So I was traveling from Truck River right up here with a lot of your renumeration and suspension during the hiring process. I just have a lot of hours up that, just there, but.
Counselor Emo.
Yes. And to Counselor Farr, there was no offense taken. Was it genuine question? It was quite obvious. I expected it, so I'm like, given the numbers, so I went back and checked my schedule to make sure that it was accurate. So thank you.
Counselor Donahue.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Just to add to, to Counselors, Ryan Walden, and Emo to attest to, I can't even, to my own, I can't speak to it, assuming that it probably is predicated upon the mathematics that are shown in the correspondence. But I do note also that Counselor Visas T. Moore is the Chair, and she was the Chair in 2016. And there was a particular challenge in 2016 as the Medical Officer of Health resigned in December of 2015. And at the very first meeting that was convened with an acting Medical Officer of Health, it was announced that the Director of Corporate Services was retiring as of March. So it was, it was a considerable, I think, amount of effort. I can't speak to it, unfortunately, Counselor Visas T. Moore is not present. But I do know that there was a considerable effort required in a very challenging environment with respect to the administration of the Brentford County District Health Unit and the Board of Health overall. Certainly warranted a great deal of enhanced effort and initiative by the Chair. And having said that, I certainly want to commend all of the staff at the Brentford County District Health Unit because through the challenges of 2016, I think it would be all but invisible to that, the unit, which is the geographical area covered by this particular agency. I would think that no one would have been aware of the challenges at the senior administration.
Thank you. Yes, challenge, that's what, that's the word I was looking for. All right, moving on to number four, the tax policy update. Mr. Foss has promised that when the province gets us this information, he's going to go through the entire tax policy process all over again. I know you're all really excited about that. I can frame Mr. Foss. It's so exciting. Number five, our laptop maintenance. Number six, the ransomware. Number seven, the EOWC. Number eight, the building code subject tanks. I also would like to congratulate Mayor Gibson and everybody that had a hand in this. I think that sometimes we get frustrated thinking that the province doesn't listen. And I think that this is an excellent example of legislation that just did not make sense and the province listened. So I think that's a win. So thank you. Oh, Counselor Gibson, yes?
Thank you, Warden. I'd just like to take this opportunity to thank two people in the chambers, namely Mr. Steve Volkmann and Mr. Jim Hutton. The letter that they composed to the Minister was a perfect example of how to protest in a very, very scientific way. And to make the point that we certainly did not agree with this, that the letter was concise, accurate, very polite, and I have to thank very, very directly. So I thank those two gentlemen for that help.
Thank you. Yes, congratulations. Thank you for doing that. Number nine, Bill 68. Number 10, our Canada 150. Please remember to wear your t-shirts and your pins and jeans and bring your $5 or whatever you feel like donating to the Brentford Victoria Hospital Oncology Unit. Obviously, it's a charity near and dear to my heart. Counselor Emo.
Just to Mr. Hutton, we're allowed to wear open-toed shoes that day, but.
I knew that was coming.
I plead the fifth, Counselor Emo.
I knew it. I knew the footfalls were coming up. Counselor Street.
Does anyone have a size 38 waist, 30 inch set of jeans I could wear?
I'm 36, you promise to use it at all.
Just for the day.
Probably can wash them all.
Yes, he promises to wash them.
I understand.
Great. What a team. You guys were really good to each other. Goodness. Also, the time capsule rocks. Yes, the deadline was today. Bob Pelzer, who is building the time capsule, is actually in Alaska on a cruise right now. So if you do want to take one of your rocks and have it stamped, Yokevsky Monuments in Pabon has said that they do, he does have time to do it. So if you'd like to take your, one of your rocks and have it stamped at Yokevsky Monuments or, or your local engraver, please do so because you do have a little bit of time. This is not about building it? Excuse me. I need, I need to conference here. You will.
We are happy to.
Okay. The county is happy to take one of your rocks and have it stamped. So you have a choice.
At their party.
At their, I, yes. You have to pay for it. Yes. Okay. I'm sorry, I didn't realize that you meant.
It's easy coordination.
Okay, yes, apparently it's easier coordination. So that's.
You want to drop me off or sign me? Can we just say yes?
Just say yes.
Oh, no. I want it in blood.
Just verbal.
Yeah, no, that's, that's good. Yeah, no, that's, that's good. Just everybody, anybody that already had it done, the ones that are done are beautiful, so I hope we can get everybody's township on a, on a rock. Okay, and finally, number eleven, the assessment for Laurentian Valley. And the report is a whole. Can I get a mover?
Absolutely.
Thank you, all those in favor. Opposed to many? Oh, yeah, it's like the last day of school, isn't it, Gary? All right, at this time, I'm going to turn this over to Chair Packett for the operations report.
Thank you, Warden Murphy. We, your operations committee wish to report, recommend as follows. For information items, number one, Highway Seventeen instruction, Pedawall of the Truck River. Information there, there are two items of particular note. One is the priority paved shoulder, and the other is the discussion in these chambers that occurred about the lessons learned in regards to the limits and durations of temporary screen some reductions, and the ministry's plan to address these matters. Item two, MTO motor vehicle collision reports. This is, the availability of the reports are now available online, electronically. But you must, in order to get them, you have to be registered, and the fee would be is two-hundred-and-fifty dollars to register. However, in looking at, at the, of what they're going to redact, and what they're going to give you, Warden Murphy strongly suggested, and I totally agree with the suggestion, is that anyone from your municipality that is present at an accident or fire needs to collect as much data as possible. It will, it will hold you well in the long run. Item three, auto value cycling and active transportation, letter from H. Tealheimer, reiterates the request to complete more paved shoulders. Item four, winter operations, the table is there, just auto whining, I've been doing this year about the weather, I have to notice that April of this year was actually not as bad as last year, so I have to take back some of my ranting. Item five, interior regulation three sixty-six slash oh-nine, display screens and handheld devices. I think this is a very important item for every member sitting at these tables. Take note that they're looking, right now, the public works, folks can use handheld items, there are two-way radios. They have an exemption that's going to expire on January first, twenty eighteen. I know that my council are preparing a motion to be submitted, asking that this be extended until more information, something there comes up, it would be. I think, I think it's more dangerous for, for those folks out there without having communications than using a handheld. But something I think each member here needs to take more. Item six, spring flooding. We've heard a couple of comments from Chief Nolan and stuff, about the meetings that are going on. Item seven, the treasurer's report. It has been expected that under control, expenditures are likely going to exceed their annual budget. However, the department's forecasting under expenditure roughly nine-hundred-and-forty-eight-thousand-four-hundred-and-sixty dollars in capital programs. Number eight, monthly project status report. This is their information. Quotations and tenders, there's a summary of those that have come in in April and May twenty seventeen in appendix one. Number resolutions, twenty seventeen Capitol Works program expansion, resolution number OPCC seventeen oh-five thirty-six, moved by chair, seconded by committee. In scope of work for the following tender to be revised, contract PWC twenty seventeen twelve, rehabilitation of County Road Twelve, West Meath Road, be extended by one kilometer and estimated additional cost of two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. Contract PWC twenty seventeen dash zero four, rehabilitation of County Road Forty-nine, La Paz Road, intended with options for surface treatment and optics paving with partially paved shoulders. And the resolutions, OPCC seventeen oh-five thirty-seven, moved by chair, seconded by committee, that the extension of contract PWC twenty seventeen oh-six, rehabilitation of County Road Twenty-six by two-point-one kilometers be approved, and partially paved shoulders be included at an estimated additional cost of two-hundred-and-seventeen thousand dollars. Background for that is there for you. Based on results, and most of the tenders that were received, it is anticipated that additional savings will be realized, and the opportunity exists to expand the twenty Number eleven, intersection of Daniel Street, County Road Two with Arthur Street, and former Canadian Tire site, house sharing agreement, police stigmatized, legalized intersection. Resolution number OPCC seventeen oh-five thirty-eight, moved by chair, seconded by committee, that the installation of traffic signals at intersection of Daniel Street, County Road Two with Arthur Street, and two forty-five Daniel Street be approved, and the county Brentwood accept fifty percent of the cost of the traffic signals. Just a bit of background, currently, Arthur Street doesn't line up with entranceway into the Canadian Tire, the former Canadian Tire store in our prior, and we're going to close that section off and open up a new, a new entranceway that lines up with Arthur Street, so that the traffic lights make it all the same. Based on the preliminary cost estimates of the signals, County Road, and the developer will each be responsible for approximately a hundred-and-ten thousand dollars. Bylaws, PWC twenty seventeen oh-one, rehabilitation of County Road One, River Road, resolution number OPCC seventeen oh-five thirty-nine, moved by chair, seconded by committee, the contract PWC twenty seventeen oh-one submitted by H. and H. Construction Incorporated, Pedawall Ontario, for the rehabilitation of County Road One, River Road, with an amount of four-hundred-and-seventeen-thousand-seven-hundred-and-ninety dollars and fifty-seven cents, plus HST be approved, and the bylaw to authorize execution of the contract passed. Background of the tenders is there for the information. Item thirteen, PWC twenty seventeen oh-two, rehabilitation of County Road Twenty-One, be prepared, resolution number OPCC seventeen oh-five forty, moved by chair, seconded by committee, the contract PWC twenty seventeen oh-two submitted by Smith Construction, Division of the Miller Group Incorporated, our prior Ontario, for the rehabilitation of County Road Twenty-One, be prepared, with an amount of six-hundred-thousand-eighty dollars and twenty cents, plus HST be approved, and the bylaw to authorize execution of the contract passed. Again, the background is there for the information. And fourteen, PWC twenty seventeen oh-five, rehabilitation of County Road Fifty-One, Pembroke Street West, Pedawall of Goldberg, resolution number OPCC seventeen oh-five forty-one, moved by chair, seconded by committee, the contract PWC twenty seventeen oh-five submitted by greenwood paving Pembroke, Pembroke, Ontario, for the rehabilitation of County Road Fifty-One, Pembroke Street West, and Pedawall of Goldberg, with an amount of six-hundred-and-forty-eight-thousand-seven-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars, plus HST be approved, and the bylaw be authorized, the bylaw to authorize execution of the contract passed. Again, background information is there. Staff has reviewed the tender results, confirmed that there are sufficient funds to complete the project this tender. Item fifty, PWC twenty seventeen oh-six, rehabilitation of County Road Twenty-Six, Laurentian Road, resolution number OPCC seventeen oh-five forty-two, moved by chair, seconded by committee, the contract PWC twenty seventeen oh-six submitted by greenwood paving Pembroke, Pembroke, Ontario, for the rehabilitation of County Road Twenty-Six, Laurentian Road, with an amount of four-hundred-and-six-thousand-one-hundred-and-forty-eight dollars. Tender contract of one-hundred-and-eighty-nine-thousand-one-hundred-and-forty-eight dollars, and contract extension, and partially paved shoulders, amount of two-hundred-and-seventeen thousand dollars, plus HST be approved, and that bylaw to authorize execution of the contract passed. Again, background is there. Resolution number OPCC seventeen oh-five thirty-seven, above provides for the extension of this contract by two-point-one kilometers, including partially paved shoulders. And the background information is there, and staff agrees that there are sufficient funds to complete this program, as, as the tender to include the extension, which is respectfully submitted by the self-chair and committee members, Gibson, Kane, Murphy, and Michael.
Thank you. Going back to information on item number one, Highway Seventeen. Number two, the, Counselor Eamonn?
Thank you, Warden. Number one, I was just wondering, should we, should we be moving on to the, for the use of cyclists, probably, on highway? We had quite a lengthy discussion about it today. The, the, not as well.
I was wondering sort of the same thing after our discussion. Is this something we might want to leave out until we receive some sort of legal opinion?
Thank you, Warden, through you, to Counselor Eamonn. I don't think it really matters, this, this is the wording that came from the MTO, so, and it is a provincial highway, it's not a highway that falls under the county's jurisdiction.
Just argue.
Exactly. Anything further, Eamonn? If you'll indulge me, I'd just like to take a minute to start, to speak to number two. Any of our fire departments that are lower tier, that do any form of heavy extrication or suppression on Kings Highway, can in fact submit to the MTO, be reimbursed for the time and the trucks, et cetera. It used to be that your fire department could readily access these reports through the OPP. They are no longer able to do that. We did have an incident at the corner of Highway Forty-One and Highway Sixty, where we had a truck roll over, and it was a significant bill to the MTO in the tune of over eleven-thousand dollars. The frustrating part was when the fire chief attempted to put this claim in, some of the information that he would normally get from the MTO, or from the, I'm sorry, from the OPP through the MTO, he just didn't have, including the license plate, because the license plates, of course, were corrupted. So it is imperative that if your fire departments are out on these Kings Highways, and they want to build the MTO, they need to make sure that they have all the information that the MTO requires, and those applications can be found on the MTO website. Is there anything further on two? Moving on to three, again, the cycling. Four, winter operations. And I agree, Counselor Packett, it did fill up the winter that never ended. Number five, our roads cruise, Counselor Eamonn?
Thank you, Warden. I just wanted to point out that this is along through our council of Laurentian Hills, and we have requests that are probably worth, we can use these two-way radio systems that they require, because they are part of emergency service, but it'd be stated as the same.
Thank you. I would say, much like the septic issue in Bill sixty-eight, this is something that we need at a, at a lower tier level to ensure that we send resolutions. I see this as being very detrimental to our roads cruise and the way that they operate. Number six, the flooding. Number seven, the treasurer's report. Counselor Donahue?
Thank you, Madam Warden, to perhaps the chair or the director, as appropriate. So much like last year, there's from the anticipated expense of the various projects to be undertaken under the asset, asset plan, since identified of nine-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. I'm just wondering, I, I note in the various resolutions that there is, our extensions have been established due to some of the current works, and I'm wondering how much of that surplus is anticipated of being able to perhaps utilize, given the, the very aggressive, the continuing aggressive prices?
Mr. Voland? Thank you, Warden, through you, to Counselor Donahue. Currently, we're anticipating using about half of the current surplus projection. We'll have a better sense of that over the next couple of weeks, as more tenders, the balance of the larger tenders come in, but right now, we're looking at about, using about half of the surplus. One of the concerns that I have, though, going forward, is that council will note winter operations are going to exceed the, the budget allocation, so we may want to keep some of that, set some of that aside for, to offset some of that overage in the winter operations.
Anything further? Thank you, Mr. Voland. Number eight, the project status report. Number nine, quotations and tenders. Ten, the Capitol Works project expansion. Number eleven, Daniels Street. Yes, oh, Counselor Donahue, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Madam Warden. I, again, it was germane perhaps to the last section also, but I wanted to, to acknowledge, and I think it's appropriate, too, as was done in twenty sixteen, that in these extensions, we are also continuing to address the active transportation component, the widening of the roadbed paved surfaces. And I certainly, I wasn't sure if it'd be appropriate spot, but I wanted to also acknowledge Mr. Teileheimer's initiative about the summit that's happening in Carleton Place, he's applying to approach the ministry's demand regarding funding that is available for the active transportation, when challenged in March. I'm very encouraged that, that he's receiving that.
Anything further? Number twelve, County Road One? Counselor Doncaster?
Number eleven.
Are you ready to give the number?
I will, ma'am.
Okay.
Sorry.
See, I'd like to go back to a number.
Certainly.
All right.
Just a question, I guess, I know specifically with developments, like plans in many communities that we're dealing with, if this was on the MTO Highway Seventeen, or any provincial highway, this would be entirely, I think it's fairly common, that this would be entirely the responsibility of the developer, and I'm wondering if this is normal practice for the county, or if this is setting some kind of precedent?
I will let Mr. Voland answer that. I think we have done this before, if not?
Thank you, Warden, through you, to Counselor Doncaster. This is a little bit different than, than many times when there's a new development, in that we have an existing set of traffic signals there, albeit what would often be referred to as a half signal. They're pedestrian activated, they're not vehicle activated, and they only control one leg of the intersection. So there's a benefit to the county, and benefit to the community, to put in a full set of signals at the intersection. It's also a benefit to the developer on the other side. So in looking at it, and in terms of rationalizing the various access points, the developers proposing to put in, and the access to Arthur Street, we felt that there was some logic in sharing the cost of those traffic signals. We do identify a need to upgrade the, the, the lamping in the signals in the next couple of years, at a cost of about twenty thousand dollars. But that would only replace the lamps in the, the signals and some of the signal heads. To go further and have the full intersection in place, we would also have to upgrade the controllers, and add poles, and add signal heads as well, all to the tune of something in the order of about two-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars. So when we look at it in aggregate, yes, you're correct, oftentimes, the developers require, if there's a new installation, to put an entire bill. In this case, it's a benefit to the county and to the, to the town as well, in terms of controlling traffic coming from Arthur Street and along Daniel Street.
Thank you. Counselor Eamonn? Thank you, Council Reimel.
Yeah, I'm very, I'm very familiar with that, Ruth. And I think it makes great sense because of the traffic coming out of Arthur and then also the realignment of the, of the driveway coming out of that new development because otherwise, it's tough enough if you're trying to get out of Arthur now, you wouldn't like it there. But if you throw in the traffic coming out of the new development and we, for the right-hand, what I would suggest, with being right-hand linked to the signal and try to time this whole stream of traffic in Daniel Street, I don't think even those are Arthur people like right here. So it makes a lot of sense. I'm, you know, I'm surprised there hasn't been an accident here. And I would suggest if you wonder quickly once that development comes on screen.
Council Stack, you'd like to respond?
Yeah, the comment and first, it's, you know, I don't know how to tell you anymore than anybody else how just crazy it is in that, in that end of County Daniel Street. I remember now both beats, Highway 17 on both ends, so all the community traffic from within the town either gets down and goes across from out of Oscar to 17. Steve knows I've been on this one for over 18 months, I guess, Steve, and he knows that there is a particular resident who started the way with the fire, you know, two years ago. And, you know, he, his credit, he didn't give up on it, made his book. Steve and his guys did a great job and Robin at the County of Rarara negotiating with Canadian Tire, trying to get a compromise here. They were going to move entrances anyways, but, you know, there are three entrances there now, this'll cut it down to two. It's, we have the Rarara Villa there, which is a seniors residence, that's one reason why the first block was in there, actually put in there. Traffic is, I call it the city street because as a councillor in Rarara, I've always been a complete spook animal, street and the traffic, though, right? And I said, you know, look, if you're in Carling in Ottawa, you face the same thing. So just view it that way, it's a fact of light. So this is really a positive move for the community and the people particularly who live in that end of town. And I can thank Steve and his guys enough for that effort that went into it over the last year.
Thank you. Anything further on eleven? Thirteen, County Route 21. And fourteen, County Route 51. The report is whole. Can I get a mover, please?
So moved.
Thank you. All those in favor opposed to any? At this time, I'll turn it over to Chair Donahue of the Striking Committee.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. We, your Striking Committee, wish to recommend this follows. Bylaws. One, resolution number STCC-17-05-03, moved by chair, seconded by committee, that Councilor Glenn Doncaster attend the Federation of Canadian Municipalities Conference in 2017. Further, that should the opportunity arise during the 2017 FCM conference for Councilor Doncaster to participate in any of the standing committees in 2017, the county council approved his participation. And further, that Councilor Doncaster be approved to run for a position on the FCM Board of Directors in 2018. And further, that revised bylaw to appoint the county committees for the ensuing year or until their successors are appointed be adopted at the May 31st, 2017 meeting of county council. And the background, I think thoroughly explains this resolution. And item number two, resolution number STCC-17-05-04, moved by chair, seconded by committee, that revised bylaw to appoint the county committees for the ensuing year or until their successors are appointed be adopted at the May 31st, 2017 meeting of county council. Such bylaw reflecting that Councilor Sweet is no longer serving as a representative on the Eastern Ontario Regional Member. And once more, the background, I think, completely explains the purpose of this resolution, all of which is respectfully submitted by myself as chair, along with committee members, Doncaster, Farr, Runtz, Murphy and Sweet.
Thank you, Chair Donahue. Going back to number one, any questions, concerns? I was just counting to make sure we have a quorum for a vote without Councilor Doncaster. I believe we do. Council Reimel.
I think it's great. Congratulations.
Thank you. Yes, thank you, Councilor Doncaster for putting his, being called a joke.
He's enjoying it. That's work.
And anything on number two? Seeing none, the report is whole. Can I get a mover, please?
So moved by chair.
All those in favor opposed to any? Thank you. Moving on to bylaws. Who is the bylaws? Oh, Council Love.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Moved by Council Love, seconded by Councilor Doncaster, that the bylaws listed on item 11 and attached here too as Schedule A on the county council agenda dated May 31st, 2017, be deemed read three times and passed.
Thank you. You've heard the resolution before you. Any questions, concerns, comments? Seeing none, all those in favor opposed to any? Thank you. Do we have any motions? Seeing none, members' written motions? New business. Council Stack?
Thank you, Warden. I asked for a moment just a few minutes. I addressed this issue at the last Rarara County Council meeting, but it's been initial mine, I can tell you, back in the 1980s, I wrote a letter to the editor to every small paper and men from county. And I do recall my good friend Gerald responded to me directly on it at that time. But, and I got, you know, I added, put my name, address in and asked people to respond about like 50 some responses, all in favor of my position. But it's come a light again and I brought it up in Rarara a couple of times. I wrote about it in the local paper last fall. And it's an issue that I, you know, I said I was wondering up here for my colleagues to give some consideration to because I'm, to be honest with you, I'm quite bewildered over the whole process. This fall, you know, we're going through the approvals now in Rarara for new separate Catholic school to be built. Just to clarify the air here, I have no issue about separate public, English, French, anything. Being one of 11 kids raised as an Irish Catholic family came through the separate system and I don't speak French, but my wife and I have helped with their own grandchildren to ensure they're in immersion programs and are picking up the language. But we cannot, as municipalities, fix our water systems, fix our roads or sidewalks, you know? We, you've been to the school systems. My grandchildren are still coming home with notes asking for pencils, papers and things to take into the school system. And I think, quite frankly, in my opinion, that's pretty disgusting. It's time, and I don't know when municipal politicians are going to drive it, but this province and anywhere else, any other jurisdiction of the state, pressures should be thinking the same way. We need one school system in this province, driven by the province, funded by the province, that's funded in such a way that it can be a tablet on every child's desk from pre-kindergarten to grade 12, because that's their world, the world of technology, and they need to have it. And we need to look at the cost of trying to operate and maintain four separate school systems in the province material on a long-term basis. And I think it's absolutely financial suicide if I, I think we can do it. And if we're honest with ourselves, we need those dollars for other things in our communities. As I mentioned, like roads, sidewalks, sewers and water systems. So, you know, my soapbox today is to try and have some attention to this issue to our local provincial member of parliament and some others who would start to start thinking about it, you know? There is no reason why the education system in communities can't be done on the campus format where there are grade schools, high schools on both sites with, you know, one gymnasium, one racetrack, one set of tennis courts, all of those things. The school being built in Rarara is a grade school this year, but the plans have been submitted for a high school with a racetrack and all of those other things that are going on to it. You know, it's, it's, there's a fairly new public school right across, right across the road from it. I picked my granddaughter up there the last five years and it's where the daycare thing is, the AJ Sherbino. The traffic along that street is unbelievable. There are no sidewalks on it, it's bastard, right? You know? But those are the side issues that the kids are put at risk in these kinds of decisions. But the big issue is the future of our communities and being able to sustain the cost and the tax, probably tax rates, something has to break. And this is an area where I think needs to be addressed. Kids need to go to school where they're, where they're working and talking and sharing their languages with each other and interacting and not, as I said at Rarara's council two weeks ago, I thought we learned a real lesson with segregation in the 50s and 60s in the southern US. This is no different. We do not want our, you know, our kids in separate schools. And I'm using the word separate there as a light, school systems in my, in my view. They need to be in one system. I look at Rarara and I think, you know, there's a Rarara hospital, there's St. Joseph's School here, the high school in the middle, Walter's out of public, beside it, the Alblates have property to stay over there, we're shutting schools down all over. I went to that high school when there were 1,400 students in it, there's barely 700 in it now. So you don't tell me there isn't space for these kids in that community? And an area like that, just using as an example, could be the future development of real educational campus, you know? Where, where right from one of the first day of school to your last in your community, you can do it. So, you know, I don't know how much longer I'll be in this political game, but that's one issue I want to start to, I'm going to take my neighbor to the right here, is the drive. And again, I'm going to start driving it home, but we seriously, as municipal politicians, need to be addressing that issue. And I know it's a political hot topic, but you know what? That's our job. And I don't know how we can sustain, we talk here about municipalities not being able to sustain the cost of their operations. Well, I don't know how we can sustain the current cost of the school systems in Ontario. Thanks for the talking.
Thank you, Council Stack. I've got Council Donahue, Council Gibson and Council Reimel.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. And thank you to Council Stack also. Obviously, this is an issue that is of significant importance to, to Council Stack. However, I, you know, from my perspective, I don't think the new business is the appropriate forum for this to be brought in front of us. I don't think it's germane to the business of the county of Renfrew. And I think if this was something that was wanting to be brought, then perhaps through the committee structure would be the appropriate place for this to be approached rather than in new business.
Thank you. Council Gibson.
Thank you, Warden. The, one of the joys you get from being a very small municipality is I assign authority on all municipal checks. And it makes my blood boil when I sign the checks to six different school authorities. And Council Stack, if you need any help, do you have the phone number?
This is going to be Council Stack's septic system. Council Reimel.
Two, two comments if I might. One was, in response to Council Stack, I think the climate is right at this point. Prior to, three, four, five years ago, we didn't, I don't think we would have had the backing from the consumer public, the people that are using the systems. But I think now they're starting to realize the dream of having, as Council Gibson said, six relatively distinct systems operating to keep the gala, providing education and providing reports to the same industry using the same format, same software, the same training programs. All of those things, I think, you know, I think if you were to provide the members of council to bring it into a discussion point, there are some other municipalities across Ontario that are working on similar, similar premises. They have gone so far as to even be seemingly, and I've asked for some comments, of course, by seemingly providing funds to keep schools open. And I think, you know, in this county, there've been a number of small communities that had they, had they had one school, as opposed to trying to keep two open, they would still have these schools. So you are quite correct. And I think this is the time, but, you know, I, I understand that the premise of Councilor Donahue about this discussion and I, I think, you know, I would encourage you nicely from the audience heads, and if you could bring it back into possibly your own finance committee, then I think you'd have more wholesome discussion. The other piece is, I was not paying attention when we finished the striking committee and I would like to acknowledge the efforts of Councilor Sweet with the Eastern Ontario Regional Network. I know that while he was serving there, I was involved at the Lord's Conference level and he was still as a conduit to get some progress and frankly, to his credit and the credit of the county manager, we instigated the cell gap analysis with our written request from his chambers. And at the same time, he carried the water at the, just kind of carry over to what I worked for. Because at that point, they were sort of, I wouldn't say casting around, but they were looking to, to see what the next thing they could do, the next big project that would benefit the area. So to his credit, he was able to tam them with this county as well as with the, with the Lord's Hocas to then drive that forward. So those are the kind of initiatives and I, and I recognize them under ours and it takes, you know, a number of calls to get support at the board level and at the provincial level and federal level on any number of initiatives. So I think, you know, it's, you know, you're a whole part of our direction, et cetera. And thank you.
Thank you. You lead me to it. We had a discussion during striking about how this sort of all went down, so Councilor Sweet understands. Is there anything further in new business? Council Farr?
Through you, Warden. I've just been going through a workshop at Markham Global Force. We were discussing Bill 68 with changes that are coming down to the municipal about accountability and transparency and how is local municipalities are going forward with some of the changes that are coming down. I know they're also going to impact county level too, in particular with code of conduct and the powers that the integrity commissioner is going to have. And the fact that most things are placed in the hands of an integrity commissioner, you lose that as the municipal control. They basically take it from, they send it off to courts. And even the person that put in a code of conduct will not be able to put it on. I found that a little shocking. This was, this was a Dean that was telling us this information. I, I do like the fact that the Green Energy Act is going to be implemented in that, that's to me good news going forward for municipalities. On that note, I would also like to take this opportunity to apologize to all county council members for having an issue that happened at my municipal council flow over to county council and end up on the front page of the evening leader. Although I am a little disappointed that I would be deemed as somebody that is not truthful. So I would like to also take this opportunity to clear that I was notified about contacting the library about several events that I was to attend, both in 2015 and 2016. That was passed on to me from the county council. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I think, you know, most of our municipalities already have codes of conduct given place as, as we had of the, I'm sorry, Council Sweet, I don't get it in this word. No, no, no.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
You want me?
No, I really didn't want you to.
Okay.
I had the opportunity, I don't know, Shelley's probably going to report through her committee on the success of the Merrechee Gala. But I have to say, as far as I'm concerned, that Donna Cottin, I've done an outstanding job with her, with her team at the, at the gala. It was first class, it was sold out, the meal was excellent, the whole evening was phenomenal. There was a cross-section from all over the Apparalmore Valley, including the garrison for the first, first time, the garrison commander was there, this RSM was there. And I'm not going to steal any thunder from Shelley, but I am pleased to hear that there's perhaps an opportunity to go beyond Merrechee La Harge, and I think that's just marvelous. I've been advocating for that for quite some time and I think it's a great opportunity to do something. But I think Donna Cottin has to be recognized for really, and her team doing an outstanding job. It was a first-class event and I, everyone enjoyed themselves. I just wish I had some money to bid on some of the silent options, but.
Poor, poor love.
I'm actually, I'm actually saving up to buy a pair of jeans for.
Can somebody please get this man? Can somebody please get this man a pair of jeans? Okay, okay, let's bring this back around. I completely agree with you, councillor Sweet. It was a lovely evening, Shelley. I was so happy to be a part of it, and even happier that I didn't have to speak. I just got to go and eat supper and enjoy the evening, although we did have to leave, we had a wedding, but, but the time we were there, we really enjoyed it. And apparently, our table won the trivia. Look at that. Yay. We know Canadian trivia. So no, I totally agree, and I, and I am looking forward to seeing if we can extend that to the man. I think that would be a lovely event. So, Peter stole, Bob. Okay, so all I have then is Rose asked me to do, the shirts on your desk, if you don't think that they're going to fit, she can exchange them for you. And I know that she's got them for our councillors as well. Excellent. And councillor Robinson had to leave, but she wanted me to remind you that she did send an email to each and every one of you about doing one kilometer of the zombie run. If we got ten of us, this includes staff, if we got ten of us, we could each do a kilometer. A kilometer's not going to kill any of us, and we don't have to run, we can walk. So, I think Peter's in, you're in, excellent, and anybody that doesn't do it has to sponsor. So you choose. That's how you walk Marley. Oh, yeah, this meeting went to hell again, that's good. Yes, councillor Sweet.
Just as a follow-up to the zombie run, so that they all know, the proceeds for the zombie run are going to complete about a kilometer of the CP rail, okay? So, and somehow or other, I got roped into being the honorary chair, and apparently, I'm getting dressed up as a zombie. So there in itself is the price of admission, right there, just to see me look, the pants on, bandages and stuff.
I just had to be in pair jeans for that day as well.
And were you two hanging around at five o'clock? And so Bob takes Sonia for the underdressed as a zombie, I think it'd be worth the extra twenty bucks.
I completely agree. That is your anniversary.
That is the anniversary for you.
Lovely. All right. That being said, any new, any more new business? Excellent. We've got nothing in close. Mayor, councillor Love?
Moved by councillor Love, seconded by councillor Doncaster, that a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the council of the County of Renfrew at a meeting held on May thirty-first, 2017, be now numbered, be read three times and passed.
You've heard the resolution before you. Any comments, questions, concerns? All those in favour? Opposed to Vinnie? I bet councillor Eamonn's going to leave his hand up.
Sure.
Yeah. Who would like to adjourn this meeting? Everybody. Councillor Eamonn sitting by councillor Packard, all those in favour? Opposed? None of you. Thank you all. This was a long but gratifying day.